Hey, good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Gainesville City Commission, February 22nd, 2022. Two, two-two, two, two, two-two. Should have worn two-twos, yeah. There, we have a room downstairs that's open as well that will be live streaming this on a big TV if anybody wants to hang out down there. And also, you'll be able to see and hear it out in the lobby where there's benches and stuff as well. And so, you know, whatever makes you most comfortable. There are three items on the agenda tonight. They're all related to one another. And, you know, so we'll take comment on each of those as we get to them. If you would like to speak to any or all of those items, there are little signup cards. One is on this table here and another that little table right there. So just fill that out, hand it to our clerk, Ms. Kessler, and then she will call up folks in the order that she receives those cards when it is the appropriate time to do so. So with that, is there a motion to adopt our agenda?
Motion.
Motion in a second to adopt our agenda. On favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so Madam Clerk, if you'll read our first item into the record, please.
The first item of this is item 200877, text amendment to section 30-3.14.j4 of the Land Development Code. This is petition PB-21-13-TCH. David Coffey, agent for South Main LLC, proposed text amendment to the Land Development Code, section 30-3.14.j4, rezoning criteria to delete the 10-acre minimum parcel size requirement for the owner of a parcel not adjacent to a transect zone to file an application for rezoning to transect with the recommendation... Oh, I'm not going to read that part.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Who do we have? Mr. Calderon, is that who we have with us? Or...
Mr. Calderon.
Okay, Mr. Calderon, thank you, Madam Manager.
Trying to get my stuff together somehow. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, good evening. Lawrence Calderon, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. This petition is a request by a private individual to change the text of the Land Development Code, section 30-3.14. And it is to change the text to remove the 10-acre minimum parcel size that's required for a parcel that is not contiguous to an existing transect zoning district. That was initiated by a private individual. However, at a joint meeting with the City Plan Board and the City Commission, you actually asked staff to address that issue, but because of workload, we were not able to address it, so the applicant kind of preempted us. So, this is the request, the requirement for rezoning, and I will not go through all of them, but there are lists here. And the other item is section J, which is an applicant to rezone to a transect. Shall meet all of these, and at the bottom, you'll see this section here. So what we're asking is to strike this section out, keep the other areas with some minor modifications. As you can see, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, this is the distribution of land uses, transect land uses throughout the city. And right off the bat, you can see that there are areas within the city that have transect characteristics that we would like to address. For example, Plaza Royale, right here, Melhapa over here, and other places. But because of that 10-acre restriction, we would not be able to do that. So, the applicant is requesting, and staff is supporting, that we remove that 10-acre requirement. The other area you could see are the zoning districts, and the same situation exists here. There are several instances of transect land uses occurring on land uses on areas or parcels which are less than 10 acres. For example, right here on Northwest 7th and Northwest 6th Street, you see, these are all U4 areas, U4 areas, not adjacent to a U or transect district, which are less than 10 acres, and they function well. A major feature of transect planning is that it incorporates a variety of residential and non-residential uses to create what we call neighborhoods. And those areas or these entities or parcels throughout the city are not primarily dictated by lot size, but characteristic. The features of a transect zoning are listed here. Moderate to intense activity areas, and we see that in the areas that designated transect. A variety of mixed uses, including residential, multimodal transportation, as you can see here, clearly defined pedestrian areas, as you can see, and not only in physical attributes in terms of separate areas, but even small things like, you know, directions of traffic, outlining the parking area, showing the pedestrian, the bicycle routes, and, you know, making places for pedestrian and adequate spaces. These are features that make up the transect factor and not so much the area. One area that is really surprising, and if you, I'm sure you've seen it, is Southwest 13th Street and Northwest 13th Street. The Southwest 13th Street, we've tried so many things, and the application of the transect has seen a significant transformation in the character and the layout and the drive for development in this area. And we have seen a lot of those areas. We have park activities, functional streets and buildings that face the street, and unique civic organizations within walking distance and close proximity to those areas. Strong consideration should therefore be given to not lot size, but the way the parcels aggregate together, the function, the uses, rather than dictating a lot size. And we feel that these are not the most ideal, this is not the most ideal characteristic in order to dictate how the transect zone is allocated, and so also the direction and growth of the city. To emphasize this, the intent of the section, which is 30-3.11, that lists what the transect zoning is, it is to establish development standards that will encourage a more efficient and sustainable urban form. The transects were applied in areas of the city not because of area or because of lot size, but areas that displayed a special characteristic, as we would see, areas with the potential to have that growth and that transect characteristic that we look for always, and areas that have the trend of compact development and have the potential to be a true transect area. And again, not the area, not the lot size that we're looking for. We've seen a lot of other aspects of planning that addresses lot sizes and not for the transect reasons. In analyzing this application, staff did not, staff looked at several aspects. We noticed that the transect was not based on parcel size. The current criteria leaves few opportunities to find parcels, and I have illustrated that in the initial slide showing the distribution of transect zones in the city.
Line unmuted.
To successfully develop areas of less than 10 acres, this is a compact infill developed city. And to expect 10-acre parcels that is vacant and to be able to be developed in that transect style form is asking for a rare opportunity. And we think that it should not be a significant factor in analyzing how a property should be zoned in terms of transit. The criteria seem contrary to several goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, and I will show some of these later. The zoning regulations based on parcel size do not facilitate affordable housing. As you will see, that in the area of Southwest 13th Street, we see the potential for developing there and the options for affordable housing. And in other areas, like I talked about, the Plaza Royale area, we see an affordable development happening there. So these are areas that are ideal, that we want to target and look at. The planning profession and associated literature do not advocate size as a criteria for designating an area as transect. I mentioned that the criteria seems contrary to the goals, objectives, and policies, and here are a few. 1.4, promote mixed uses, 4.1, establish use categories that's sufficient, and so forth. Here is an example, right in our backyard on Southwest 4th Avenue and 5th Avenue and just east of 13th Street. You see, 4th, 13th Street is here, and 12th Street is here. This is a development with transect characteristic, and it's less than 10 acres. And if we say to ourselves that this development is not adjacent to a transect, so we can't develop within the, with the transect standards, we are surely depriving ourselves and the opportunity for important and compatible growth in the city. So here is what we have in this area. This is the potential for this development. This is the kind of development that we see. Compact, high intensity, appropriate, it's adjacent to a historic district, and yet it fits in there by providing adequate separation. So the 10-acre size is definitely not a significant element in looking at the criteria for allocating transect zoning. The proposed ordinance that we are addressing is, this is how the ordinance reads now, and what we're proposing is to add this character, this additional area here, to give it more qualifying authority, and to be able to pinpoint areas that really have the potential and that are actually depicting transect characteristics. And we would like to strike this area out. So this is the text change that is proposed before you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Plan Board's recommendation is to approve the petition. Staff's recommendation is to approve the petition, and staff recommendation to the City Plan Board was to approve this petition. So our recommendation tonight is that you approve this ordinance as presented. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Calderon. Are there any questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, yeah. If you want to speak, go ahead, just press the light, but go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Calderon, would you define for me transect, please?
Transect is a form of designating zoning areas. It is based on the concept that in the central part of the city, you have a higher density of development, both commercial and non-commercial. And then as you radiate out of the city, you get lesser density and more rural type. And the transect is actually trying to mimic that area, but not in terms of the entire city as looking at it as a center and concentric areas around it, but looking at neighborhoods and various areas where you can bring together that central city aspect, which has non-residential, residential office, all those types of use in coexisting together. So we spread them out into these little balls or neighborhood sections where it's appropriate to have those. So you have transportation, you have multimodal transportation types, you have various mixed uses within this area. I hope that provides some kind of guidance for you.
Thank you.
Did you conclude? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hay-Santos?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I support this change. I think it's very separated from the zoning on Main Street. The City Commission, the Plan Board, I believe unanimously supported making this change a few years ago. The transect zones are walkable mixed-use zoning. The other zonings we have are car-centric. We don't have really other mixed-use zoning that allows a mixed-use with pedestrian being put first. I think that's why it's important for us to make this change. If we want a walkable city, we have to have zoning that allows for walkability. The other zoning categories we have are house-trip malls and large parking lots and all of that. This one puts people first. It has space for sidewalks, it has space for trees, and it allows of mixed uses. And I think to the staff's point, like, 10 acres of land that's available is not really an option. There's not very many of those parcels inside of our city. So I think we should move forward on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Calderon. I have a question, if you could. With the added language on the proposed modifications, that characteristics and redevelopment potential supporting coherent expansion, such elements must include. So all of the things like updating the street system, updating the sidewalks, pedestrian spaces, lighting, utility infrastructure, all of that would have to be upgraded on any properties that are changed by the new ordinance, correct?
So what actually happens is that the land use and zoning are just classifications that are applied to a particular piece of property. Then that property has to go through the development standards in order to be developed, and those standards are the standards that are applied to this development so that it develops or it envelops the characteristic of a transect area. Also, we look at areas that have a strong potential, either existing or to grow into the transect area. So that's how the process would operate. So we would apply those transect zoning, but if it's not zoned transect, then we cannot apply those standards. We would have to apply the street conventional zoning to it without the effect of the transect characteristics.
Thank you. So if we change, if we change the, if we make these changes, applications to rezone to transect will then have to make these enhancements to the neighborhood?
Yes.
Just to be approved? They would have to improve lighting, they would have to improve infrastructure, sidewalk, street, like, they would have to do all that to be in compliance and to be considered?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for being with us this evening, and thank you for being patient as we moved this forward several times with the intent to not talk about it at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, but to do it at a time when people could come down and talk about it. That's why we pushed it forward to its own special meeting, rather than the meetings that it had been scheduled for several times prior. So thank you for being patient in considering this. It's unfortunate that we're having the transect discussion at the same time as we're talking about a specific piece of property, because most folks who are here are thinking about that as one and the same thing, and it's not one and the same thing. Transects, the concept behind transects is not a simple concept. I don't pretend that it's an easy thing to get our heads around, but it's a positive thing, in my view, because it requires you to, it requires any developer to do some extra things that most people would agree are positive things when they develop something. And Mr. Persons, holler at me if I'm wrong. So it would be great if we had been able to consider the change in transects separately, that's this item, separately from the land use and zoning that comes up later, because they're not the same thing. So I want everybody to understand that. And generally speaking, making this transect change forces better development when development That's my general view of it. So I support this piece. My support of this piece does not necessarily mean full support of what comes next. I know there's been a lot of confusion and a lot of conflation of all of it, that it isn't the same thing, in my view. So there's that for what it's worth. I think this gives the opportunity for us to do better things going forward. At least, that's my hope. So there you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Hay-Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, every other zoning category that the city has does not have a size minimum for rezoning, except for this type of zoning, which is our most walkable type of zoning that we have. So it's kind of really backwards. I would move petition PB-21-13-TCH.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second that we adopt the proposed petition and ordinance. And I'll quickly say that, yeah, 10 acres was an arbitrary number to begin with, and so I see no sort of basis for maintaining that. And, you know, I agree with the comments of my colleagues that if we want to see the sort of highest-quality, walkable, connected, multi-use type development, we need to not erect barriers that are going to prevent that. So I think this action definitely helps us along that way, and will help quality redevelopment in the core of our city. So with that, Madam Clerk, I'll open it for public comment, and so, I'm sorry? Your lights on?
Mr. Mayor, there is a, there's an applicant to address the commission on this.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Calderon, thank you. Really quickly, before we hear from the applicant, Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
We do not...
You don't have substitute motion?
We do a little different than the county. We take the motion on the floor, and then if it fails, then another motion can be offered.
Okay, so you don't do...
Our procedures are a little, we don't, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes I think we should.
Yes.
But, yeah, that's, our procedures are a little different than the county commission. So, Mr. Calderon, if you want to introduce the applicant?
Mr. Coffey is in the audience, and he wanted to address...
Oh, okay, he's here in the chamber. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Is it allowed to take the mask off?
It is, yeah. We encourage people to keep them on, but it's not required.
I think you'll hear me a little better.
Fine, yeah.
Well, I certainly agree, it would have been best had this been handled on a different, at a different time and different place, independent of the next two items. It needed to be addressed, however, in order to hear the next two items. And the applicant really only was bringing it forward to accelerate the timeframe for something that you all had already determined that you wanted to do, make some amendment to the ordinance. And so, seeing that four members are, at least four, are already thinking that this should be approved, I'll dispense with any significant commentary on this, other than to suggest that the form of zoning that the transect takes, as I think Commissioner Ward, you were indicating, is far superior to the generic forms that we otherwise apply, because it's very specific in the standards that it applies in order to reinforce walkable quality urbanism, and we can see the effects of it where it has been applied. And this change is simply making it possible to have it apply when the commission deems appropriate in more locations than is presently possible. So with that, I'll close.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coffey. And, Mr. Calderon, if you, I think the most helpful slide for you to leave up, as we're taking public comment on this item, is the slide with the additional language and the strikeout language. So it has the four sort of criteria, and...
Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Coffey finished with his presentation?
He is, yes.
Okay, I am advancing the slides for him, so I was...
Okay.
Thank you. Let me rest, let me stop sharing and reshare my screen.
And while he's doing that, so the clerk will call your name up in order that you're received for comment on this item. If you signed up for one of the following two items, and of course, we'll get to that when we get to those items. So she'll call your name, you'll come up, once you start speaking, a green light will come on right there in front of you. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left to speak, and then when the red light comes on, your time is expired, and I'll ask the clerk to invite the next person up to speak. We ask that everybody remain civil. You look to be a very civil and courteous crew, so I don't expect anything different, but that also means no cheering or jeering. We want everybody, regardless of their point of view, to feel welcomed to come and share that without anybody, you know, doing anything to intimidate them or harass them. And also, the amazing Ms. Molden will be cleaning the area between every speaker, so if you'll just give her a little time to do that, you know, we're just trying to keep everybody as safe as we possibly can. So with that, Madam Clerk... Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ariola, for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask, if it's possible, I know that we are not going to field any substitute motions, but I'd like to at least hear the commissioner's thoughts, it may influence my vote.
Sure, yeah. I mean, if you were just gonna, if you want to share what you're thinking, if you'd like, you're under no obligation to do so, but if you'd like to this time, that'd be fine.
Thank you. I was going to offer a motion to deny this petition, and the reason I'd like to, for you to consider denying it is because I think we're all operating under a ruse of everything is geared to affordable housing. And at this point, I think a lot of people use that as, just as a catch-all, particularly since the, I'm going to, you look confused, but I'm gonna get to my point. Particularly since we, we are, anyway, let me move on from affordable housing. The reason I am opposed to this is that I think it opens the door to spot zoning all over the city of Gainesville. It destroys the character of Gainesville, and it encroaches on and destroys the last historically black neighborhood, Sugar Hill. It has the potential to do that. It has the potential to destroy Coakley Hills and Kirkwood, because the major change here takes away everything and opens Gainesville up to lose its character. I think what we need to do is to have a meeting where we invite our neighbors, our citizens, to sit with us and help us decide what it is we really want Gainesville to look like, because what's happening now is not what I think people want to see. I think we are destroying the character and destroying it for years to come. I am just particularly concerned since Portus has been destroyed, Pleasant Street has been destroyed, and now we're moving to Sugar Hill. Thank you. For that reason, I want to deny the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that opportunity to be to vote against this motion, and if it fails, then this change would not be implemented. Okay, so Madam Clerk, I will turn it over to you.
The first individual we have signed up for this item is Gary Gordon, and that will, he'll be followed by Sharon Bauer.
Sure, question, I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, real quick, Commissioner Ward can ask a question?
Mr. Persons?
Mr. Persons, could I ask a question of you?
I gotta extricate myself out there. Andrew Persons, Director of Sustainable Development.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. So, with or without this, it is still possible to do, to change zonings in other parts of the city?
Yeah, absolutely. What we're talking about are criteria that your city plan board, and then ultimately the city commission, used to determine whether or not to rezone a property. Those standards, as you see here, included, as Mr. Calderon indicated, a, this requirement that all these other things have to be met, and there has to be a requirement that it's a minimum of 10 acres in order to rezone to a transect. But ultimately, the commission still has the, like, the say over whether or not you zone, regardless of what the criteria say. So you still, the power still resides in the commission to zone or not zone a property.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel like we're conflating a lot of stuff here that isn't, that isn't the same thing. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Chestnut, Commissioner Chestnut?
Would it be reasonable-
Need a chair right here.
Would it be reasonable for people to assume that this petition opens the door to spot zoning in Gainesville?
I would say, well, generally speaking, spot zoning is illegal. The only exception where we have sort of spot zoning that occurs is when we have a planned development zoning, a PD zoning, which the commission's heard a couple of those relatively recently. And those are sort of negotiated zoning districts. But generally speaking, we, like, we highly discourage spot zoning, like, so, you know, a spot of zoning in the middle of a neighborhood, for instance, that would, A, you know, likely not meet any of the city's standards, and it would also, like, not likely meet any, the legal criteria for changing. So, rather, regardless of all of this criteria, like, we would definitely recommend against any sort of spot zoning.
Okay, so, for example, a cotton club in that neighborhood, if you were to put a 14-story building down at Depot Park, or near Depot Park, that would be out of character with that whole neighborhood. Would that be what some people might perceive as spot zoning?
I mean, I think what the, what we're talking about with this is separate from the discussion that we'll have next, about whether or not downtown zoning is appropriate for, you know, for the subject property, in terms of sort of, like, setting-
Is this not clear in the way you passed this?
Yes, yes. Absolutely right. That, the property that you'll, the property that you'll be hearing next is less than 10 acres. So if the commission did not approve this, then that petition would be moot. The, I want to be clear, there, that's not to say that the applicant couldn't bring another petition with additional property to meet the 10 acres if that stayed in place. And that is, sometimes, I think, a, perhaps a consequence of having this admittedly somewhat arbitrary 10-acre cap, is that because you need that 10 acres, a property or a developer may go out and buy more property to get to that 10-acre limit, in order to initiate a land use and zoning. But, to your point, yes, if the commission doesn't move this forward, then the other two subsequent petitions would not also move forward.
Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm staying here.
Well, you read my mind. I would like to ask, I think the phrase was used, planning professionals and literature don't specify lot size as a criteria for transect zoning. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how it is that we came to 10 here in Gainesville. Maybe that's too broad of a question, but-
Well, I, like, I can tell you, back when some of this language was being worked on, and I don't remember exactly, like, how we ended up at 10, but I think the idea was, we already have zoning criteria, or rezoning criteria, in the land development code and in the city's comprehensive plan, which lay out all the criteria that you all use to make zoning decisions on property. When the transect zoning was, was created for the city, the thought being that, well, transect zoning is a new thing, it's a brand-new code for the city, you know, back five, six years ago. And there should be some additional consideration when we're zoning to transect zoning. Because that's, it was, as I said, a new zoning, a new thing for the city at the time. So those criteria, I think, were put in. The 10-acre limit, you know, why it's 10 acres, or not 5 acres, or not 20 acres, you know, I can't probably speak to the specifics of it, but I'm not surprised that there's no literature that says, like, you know, the, you know, the 5 acres is terrible, 10 acres is wonderful, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a number in a code to some extent. I think what's maybe important to take away is, there are a bunch of criteria already for deciding zoning district changes in the city. The question for the commission is, do you want that 10-acre limit to also be something that's a, you know, go-no-go decision on any zoning change for transect?
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So after Ms. Molden, we will then get back to Mr. Gordon.
I assume so.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission staff. My name's Gary Gordon. I'm here to speak against this. There were so many contradictory statements that were made in the planner's statement. I'll start with the first and what seems to me the primary one, which is that this was the kind of zoning that you look for where there's already some density. And then he showed a map that showed the things spreading out like a cancer all through the city. If you think about the blue map that was up there, and then the yellow map. Transect zoning, if transect zoning is allowed adjacent to transect zoning, adjacent to transect zoning, adjacent, you've basically got urban sprawl within the urban area. So you've got this density, and then they get to do this density next to it, and then they get to do this density next to it. The 10 acres makes a lot of sense to me, because I think when the people put this together, they initially thought, that's a large amount of land, and we don't want smaller amounts of land being changed in a way that's going to affect the area. It should be a larger amount of land. So I'm in agreement with Commissioner Chestnut. I agree with Commissioner Ward that it's unfortunate that these two items came up, but they are unfortunately related, because as you heard, just heard from Mr. Persons, if you approve this, it paves the way for the next two pieces that are coming before you. If you don't approve this, in his words, the other two pieces are moot. Moot. So you have the opportunity, right now, to say that this overall policy, which hasn't really been discussed that much in public, which is, you're being offered contradictory information on, it means this, it means that, you have the opportunity to shut it down. You have to ask yourself, in all of this development talk, who are you developing for? You're elected to represent the people of Gainesville, not the people who might move to Gainesville, or the people who want to move to Gainesville. I'm always hearing about that. You're here to represent the people who live here. And do we want this density to continue to occur and to continue to spread throughout the community? And I think the answer that the public has given over and over again, at meeting after meeting, is, no, we don't want it. So please, turn it down. Thank you.
Next we'll have Cindy Gordon.
I think Ms. Bauer was up next, correct?
She said she didn't want to speak to this item.
Okay, thank you, apologize.
Now, would I press the green button?
When she starts, she'll start it, before you, you don't have to do anything. You can just start speaking.
Oh, okay, my name's Cindy Gordon, I live here in Gainesville. Many of us are very concerned about this development that is about to go onto this property. We're concerned about the environment and what it would do to the Depot Park area. A lot of people here enjoy going to Depot Park. I don't know what it would look like with more congestion, more traffic. And it's all being done without pre-planning some sort of trans, overarching transportation plan. A lot of us are also concerned about equity. Building a 14-story building, hotel, or mixed-use, or whatever, right next to Porters and Kirkwood and Sugarfoot, what would that do to the neighboring properties? Would that drive those property values up so high that the people could no longer afford to rent there? That new families coming in could not afford to buy a home there? So there's the equity question. And then there's the transect, transect zoning question, which is allegedly illegal, although Mr. Persons just indicated to us that it can be adapted, altered, per project, in certain cases. So that there could, there's the danger of spot zoning and Gainesville no longer resembling itself. There is a whole can of worms inherent in this proposition, and I urge you to turn it back, and instead, take up the substitute motion that was offered, that addressed all those concerns that was offered by Commissioner Chestnut.
Next is Judy Thompson, I'm not quite sure of the first name, Thomas?
Yeah, it's July Thomas, but I answered all of them. Good evening, everybody. So, there are a few things at play here. The first thing I want to start with is, Commissioner Ward, you mentioned that you think that there's a lot of confusion out here tonight, and this has sort of been, this is representative of the way that y'all have governed, right? Which is, you assume that the populace is ill-informed, is confused, doesn't know what's going on. I think the reason why you see a roomful of people here is because they fundamentally lost faith in your ability to run, specifically with zoning. Now, you're up here saying that, oh, you're not going to do anything with this, we're just going to change this a little bit about the transect zoning, you're not going to do anything. But in prior meetings, you've talked about upzoning, you've done curveball upzoning on Northwest 23rd, that new development, when there was a, already an approved plan by the community, and then Hay Santos and Poe took an opportunity to try and upzone that. And I think what you see is just that we don't trust that you know what you're doing with the, with the capital here. Now, we all know your perspective is supply-and-demand argument, right? A basic supply-and-demand argument, which says if you increase supply, the price level will drop. What you are perhaps failing to take into account here is that there's a different argument. What you're looking at is just the rental market that's down here. But above this, this is all like millionaires and thousandaires and stuff, but up above it, you have these billionaire investors, right? That are actually driving the market, driving the development here. And what happened is, after the 2008 financial crisis, have a good one, after the 2008 financial crisis, they moved away from CDOs, and they moved toward commercial mortgage-backed securities. And the idea was, just like they had been bundling subprime mortgages and selling those as bonds, they began bundling commercial mortgages, specifically targeting college towns, where right outside the university is the most valuable land. So they build these commercial mortgage properties, which are these large residential apartment complexes, they package them together, and those are sold. Now, these things open, we don't know what vacancies are at, what we do know is that they were turning away census takers at the doors, so the census takers couldn't go and find out what vacancies they have there. Meanwhile, they're coming to you and telling you that they need to build more. Why do they need to build more? Well, they need to tear down stuff that is currently affordable, because there's no mortgage on stuff that's already paid off, they can't bundle that and resell it. So instead, they're coming to you and saying, we need to tear down the stuff that's affordable, to build more luxury stuff, so we can bundle that and sell it. This is just another perspective, right? But it seems like the five of you are so entrenched in your perspective of the fundamental supply-and-demand, introeconomic stuff, that you fail to even take into account that there could be other explanations here. And that's why we're here, we don't want to be here, it's Tuesday night, man, we want to be at dinner. But here we are, because we don't trust you all to consider this from multiple points of view. So that's all that we're asking, is to consider different points of view, maybe recognize that you've had a series of policies throughout your tenure that haven't exactly gone according to plan. And now it sort of looks like you're in a lame duck session, trying to cram through your upzoning one more time, just to try and sneak in, you know, the new urbanism plan for the city, which nobody wants. You failed on the tech hub, so what did you do? You pivot. You're still trying to make it to next Austin, Texas, you're still trying to redevelop everything. One last thing that I'll say is that if you open up the rent gap by building this apartment complex, what's going to happen is, there's a cyclical nature here, where the rent cap keeps running up until you only have properties which are for investment. This has happened in other cities, we should look at them, we should see how investment has driven these neighborhoods to be just places for people to park their investment money. Thank you.
Great, appreciate you being here. Madam Clerk?
Next will be Kurt Johnson.
Yeah, hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak my mind. I think, you know, I'm not very fully informed on this thing, but alarms me, and what seems to alarm other people I've talked to, is that this change will allow a 14-story building. And I didn't hear that addressed. I only see the, oh, they're going to make it, you know, encourage walkable streets and this and that, things that, you know, we would enjoy, that supposedly this transect thing would require that maybe isn't required from other development, which is beneficial. But I didn't hear anybody talk about the 14 stories. And so, the property on South Main Street is where they did this beautiful work, making it supposedly conducive to an art district, and people walking around and bicycling, and the Depot Park is there, and the museum, if you can now, if this allows them to build almost 5 acres, 14 stories high, that seems to be the thing that alarms me, and the rest of us, I think, are wondering about. So maybe you can address that. And it's the transect, you know, the standard building, I'm assuming that is in a transect zone. I don't think anybody wants more standard buildings plopped somewhere else, especially down South Main Street. Most of the buildings there are one-story, and it's close to the neighborhood. So, again, my guess is that the transect zones are intended for the taller, denser buildings, that should go adjacent and work out adjacently, instead of being plopped here or there, around the city. Southwest 13th is not attractive, but it makes more sense that they're more continuous on that, sort of designated for that type of development. But if you're going to start popping it in other places, you have no, it appears to be, there will be no restriction to where these things can go. So, arbitrary, you mentioned, Mayor Poe, that 10 acres was arbitrary. I think it, we could be equivalently arbitrary to just get rid of it, you know? Why have 10 acres? Let's just put them wherever we want.
I appreciate you being with us tonight, thank you.
Okay, that's mainly my point.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jean Gallagher.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. I'm not a city planner, but I look at what has already been done on 13th, and the buildings are not attractive, there's no landscaping required, many of them are built right up to the street, and I don't know why, I mean, I would think that that would be kind of your job to make sure that what building and development does get done is attractive. I've lived in other towns, in other college towns, that are just beautiful, people have to, developers have to come up with plans to make what they do aesthetic. There's no aesthetics, I don't see that in any of the development on 13th that's happened. There was a commissioner, and I don't remember who it was, that said, I don't want canyon development, and that's kind of what we're getting. We have a university, it's the flagship university of Florida, and it's starting to look like not an attractive town, not a pretty town. And it- And it makes, it kind of makes me lose confidence that you know what you're doing. I don't know who you're listening to, other than developers who want to come in and develop the heck out of everything. But I live here, and I don't want to see my neighborhood, which is on South Main Street, turned into thousands of more cars. And I don't want to see it turn into Thirteenth Street. And that's, it seems to be what's happening. So past developments have been allowed without enough parking, without a look of traffic. I know you want a walkable city, but most of us have cars and have to drive places. And when you have to sit through two or three red lights, that means that somebody's not doing their job making sure that development happens in a reasonable way that makes the quality of all of our lives better. So it kind of makes me wonder who some of the commissioners are serving, and who they're listening to. You know, like I said, I don't have a city planning degree or anything. I just know what I see when I look around compared to what Gainesville was like when I first moved here. And I don't see it being improved. And I don't see it becoming more walkable, or more affordable, or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Peter Alcorn. Alcorn?
Welcome. Hey, thanks, guys. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Like seeing a bunch of old friends. I live in Kirkwood. My name is Peter Alcorn. I live in Kirkwood. I've been in Gainesville for about thirty-five years. I'm really frustrated to be here tonight. It seems, I can't, I can't even understand why I have to become educated on transect zoning and this ten-acre minimum and all this stuff, just so that I can, that I can help to prevent fourteen, two-hundred-feet-high building on the edge of a park. Doesn't make any sense. That's taller than the Siegel Building. I really don't think we're here because of this ten-acre thing. We're here because we have a really great lawyer, David Coffey, who has preserved thousands of acres probably around here, and built bike trails. He's really, really good. And somebody with a lot of money hired him to find a way to build this damn thing on that property. And the ten-acre thing is just our little window into making this happen. There is no groundswell of people concerned about this ten-acre rule. It's not about that. It's about somebody with money finding a way in. He spends all the time to do the research, so we all have to come back up here and figure out what the heck's going on and try to defend it. It makes no sense. And I agree with what July Thomas said. It is, please, look at what is going on in the economy. It's so easy to understand what this money is doing. And we are just absolute pawns in this. You guys are pawns. We're pawns. We're having to, you know, just silly stuff. We already went to a neighborhood in Kirkwood. We went to the meeting about the George Young property, where they want to put a hundred and seventy-five bedrooms on a half-an-acre or something. It's ridiculous that we have to go and fight this. They said, well, we've got our community input now, because we went and met with the neighbors. We will hear nothing from them. We're simply wasting time. And I really, really hope that you guys can be brave, see what's going on, and not allow this to happen at all on, next to our park. The last thing I'll say is, is that dropping this affordable housing term into a project like that is shameful. It has nothing to do with affordable housing. It's about luxury housing, investment money. And if we really believed that we needed to do something about affordable housing, and everyone in this country would say we do, then we would approach things as that that was our primary motivation, not making investors happy. I also would say that I've spent a long time, it was ten or twelve years, on the Gainesville Enterprise Development Zone, trying to make, help things happen in the East Side. I also worked with a school, trying to get a school established in this city for almost twenty years. And every time we tried, we're stopped by zoning. Why? We didn't have David Coffey. We didn't have a big fancy lawyer. And zoning stopped us every single time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments.
Next speaker will be Danielle Chances.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Danielle, and I'm a community organizer and activist. I'm sure many of you are familiar with me at this point. I mean, this is just a bad idea. This transect zoning, I get it. I heard what you said, Commissioner Ward. You know, it's unfortunate that this is being heard at the same time as the other two issues. I think July made a really good point, which is that we don't trust you all. We don't. Like, period, blank. I can't count the amount of meetings that I've sat in here and seen people beg and plead for you guys to do the right thing. I've seen people get on their knees before you here, and you guys say, we don't care what you think, because you're uneducated, and we know better and pass things anyways. If I took you guys at your word, though, and I did trust you, and I assume that you guys do have good intentions, because you guys do think that this transect zoning is good for the community, I'm going to tell you this. The road to hell is paved on good intentions. And Andrew Persons told you yourself that passing this zoning change would literally pave the way for these other agenda items. So again, paving the road to hell for this horrible, horrible development. I mean, we have begged you guys to care about the community. Like Commissioner Chestnut said, what's happened to all of Gainesville's historic black communities? We fought here for Seminary Lane. You guys didn't care. You didn't do anything about it. We're tired. I mean, we, we just want you guys to care. Actually, I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to heckle the governor while he was at Santa Fe College. And I told him, the people of Florida need help. We're in a housing crisis. I mean, we see rent increases of forty to fifty percent here in this city. The people of Gainesville need your help. We do. We need your help. This is not it. We don't need to change this. If you guys really care about this, if you think this is a good idea, take Cynthia Chestnut up on her, I'm sorry, Commissioner Chestnut up on her offer. Go out to the community. Explain why you think this is good. Explain why, have town halls with the community. Talk to us. Help us understand why this is good. But you guys continue to do things that are, you know, harmful to the community. We asked for a moratorium on development. You didn't give it to us. And we're in legislative session right now. And so I've been doing a lot of work. I go to Tallahassee almost every week, fighting against legislation statewide. And one thing that we constantly ask ourselves is, who is behind this legislation? Who is funding it? Who is advocating for this change? Look at what's going on right here, right now. Who is behind this change that they're advocating for right here, right now? It's the developers that have been destroying our city. I moved to Gainesville almost eleven years ago, and it looks nothing like the city I moved to eleven years ago. The developers are destroying our city. And if you want to be complicit in that, then you can go ahead and pass this, because that's what's going on. That's going to be your legacy, the legacy of destroying the communities that you claim to care about. So again, please do not pass this zoning change.
Thank you.
Next is Tim Larson.
Mr. Larson? Do we have a Mr. Larson? Mr. Larson, if you're watching downstairs or out in the hall, just come on up and we'll get you. Oh. Welcome.
Hey, there. I just want to take this, just from a different perspective. Like, I love walkable cities. And the speech is right how I love walkable cities. And I definitely do think, I just, I think a lot of the younger people want more density. For example, I know that no one behind me thinks this right now. And when it comes to walkable cities, all I can think of is crossing Sixteenth Avenue, which is filled with cars, with my five-year-old on a bicycle, and it's terrifying. Now, cities were not designed to be static. And according to current population trends, in eighteen years, about eighty thousand more people will be living in this county. So we can either choose to build a, like, a denser urban core, or we can continue to bulldoze our lands on the exterior of the county. And that will create even more traffic commuting to the inner core. And again, this is just my love of walkable cities. So if we choose the curtail downtown density, then that just means more, and then more traffic on Sixteenth Avenue, and every other major street in Gainesville, for that matter. Most young people are not afraid of density. In fact, most young people want a denser urban core with more car-free bike paths, wider sidewalks, more pedestrian-only zones, more options within our walking or that are within a walking or biking distance. And a more vibrant downtown, including South Main Corridor, just requires more people living downtown and on the South Main Corridor. Some of the initiatives that people have pushed back before was closing downtown streets to cars, some of these urban issues. The North Main renovations, the South Main renovations, the roundabout on South Main, the goals for Lot X, there's been pushback. Depot Avenue improvements, pushback. Deep End Avenue Bike Trail, pushback. Depot Park, pushback. Parking, et cetera. Look how all those turned out. Depot Park is an absolute hellscape right now. There's people walking around, children playing, dogs running after sticks, and babies in strollers. I don't know how we survive. And to this day, despite the loud warnings, not a single semi-truck has overturned while trying to maneuver the South Main Roundabout. There's actually no single-family residences abutted against these areas. And this is against urbanism in general. But I understand why people are opposed to this. I also am against, like, monolithic-style buildings. But I do know that more people just need to live downtown and on the South Main Corridor. Lastly, there's already a ten-story building adjacent to Depot Park, but no one seems to care about it. And it's the power plant. But there's no organizing against that, because it actually doesn't bring any more people to downtown. So, thanks.
Thanks.
Next is William Alcorn.
William? Nope.
Hello. I'm here representing my mother, who's eighty-six years old and couldn't be here tonight. Been coming to Gainesville for about the last, excuse me, thirty years. And I used to really enjoy being here, and I still do. I have the perspective of being an architect for the last nearly forty years, and serving on the Planning and Zoning Committee for my community council in two different communities. When we were considering cases, we always went back to the comprehensive plan. And you seem to have one, which is great. In two cases, we were instrumental in creating sub-area plans. You have the downtown core, and then you have designated areas that where you could have some additional future development. There might be higher density, might be different use. It allowed for evolution in the future. Didn't seem like you have that, so you have this transect component, which is a good idea. The ten-acre, I'll just surmise that, I believe, a ten-acre minimum meant that the developers needed to be serious in aggregating property so that they could come in with a plan, propose it. Here's our, here's our big plan. Ten acres is enough to have transitions at the edges to non-compatible or incompatible adjacencies, so you lessen the impact on those existing residents and businesses. So making, doing away with the ten-acre minimum does open the door, as a number of people have mentioned, the first speaker included, and Commissioner Chestnut, to essentially spot zoning. If you don't, if you didn't have the ten-acre minimum, hey, we're going to do something less. And that is tantamount to, as I said, spot zoning and the adjacent, or the potential for conflicts with future, the future is very, very real. This appears to be, the next two items, which are certainly related to this, are what the, this change in the code for transect zoning is really all about. It's a, open the door, and this next project will walk right through it, and there'll be others. If you look at that comprehensive plan, I think the transect zoning, ten-acre minimum, really makes sense. Developers need to aggregate the property, for better or for worse, but they have to be serious about it. And they're not going to be able to grab small chunks and try to do a change of, change of use in the zoning to get the projects they wanted. I would encourage the commission to open up the community planning process again. Maybe you revise the master plan.
Thank you. I'm afraid your time has expired.
And move forward.
Appreciate that, yeah. And we're actually going through our comprehensive plan update right now.
Next speaker is Melanie, and I, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Barr? Welcome.
Hi. Shortly after I received my master's degree in urban regional planning, with an emphasis on historic preservation, Arlington Square was constructed on Third and Third, Southeast Third and Third. I was pretty shocked then. It's a suburban-style apartment complex with three stories maximum. That is where high-rises need to be. People can walk to the restaurants, the Hippodrome, Bo Diddley, their bank, other things they need to do. It was three stories. That baffled me. Why would a developer do that? It didn't, it didn't need to have three stories. It should have had a high-rise. Putting a fourteen-story building over a mile from downtown around a park is wrong. Those people are not going to walk to downtown dripping with sweat over a mile. And there's very little services near it. Everybody is going to get in their car and go where they need to go, or possibly bike. Not too many, some, some will bike. But no one's going to walk to downtown. When I got my master's degree over forty years ago, we learned spot zoning is bad. This is exactly what you're doing. There is no stepping down. You can see the first, number one, a logical extension of an existing zone or an adequate transition between zones. There's no adequate transition. There is single-family homes, and then you're jumping up to a fourteen-story building. That's wrong. It's, no one wants to sit on the porch at a bed and breakfast in the Southeast Historic District and see a high-rise. Let me give you an example. When I was in Denver, there's Fort Mout Park. I don't know who's been there. But I was talking to a reenactor, who was giving us the history of Denver. And I took, stepped back to show him full length in the picture. And there's high-rises behind him, beyond the trees. They're inappropriate. It looked wrong. It's still wrong. You shouldn't do this. I'm speaking now because this opens the door for the spot zoning of Ten Fifteen South Main. Don't put fourteen-story buildings there.
Thank you.
Next is Sylvia Palusi.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for taking public comment. I think you didn't take public comment, though, when you conceived this idea. So I am here to let you know that I grew up in South Florida. And like all of us in this room, we're all transplants. And we, when I get back to South Florida, what I remiss is that a lot of the places I grew up no longer exist. And I can't take my three children to places that I enjoyed, because they're not there, because high-rises are there. And because the traffic is so unbearable, people can't get from point A to point B without being really overwhelmed. And it's happening here in Gainesville. And part of what we all love about Gainesville is the natural setting and the trees. And that when I moved here, this was a city that was committed to keeping nature alive. And I am a business owner, and like I said, I have three children here. But primarily, the people I spend the majority of my time with are little people who are under the age of seven. And when they want to know what the world is going to be like, I don't want to tell them that they're going to continue to inherit the mistakes that we have made. We are in a major problem with our whole global world. And the kids know it. And the depression that the teenagers are feeling, because they see what's coming. It is our job to make sure that the world is better for them. And this is a convenient way of saying we're going to open the doorway to continued growth, that nobody, at least the people that I know, really want it. So if you really want affordable housing... So if you really want affordable housing, I think there is other ways of doing it. And I just, with my last passing comment, when I did move here, I worked at a school that, guess what, isn't here anymore. What's in it is a high-rise apartment complex, and nobody cared at the time because Depot Street, Depot Avenue was wrought with crime, with prostitution, and the people who have lived in Porter's Quarters, some of them for generations, still live there. And this is only going to make the gentrification of that area even worse, because all of a sudden, we care about Depot because it has something that the rest of us want, but we didn't care about Depot Park and when it wasn't there, Depot Avenue, when the people in Porter's Quarters were saying that they needed help with the crime and the prostitution. Then it fell on deaf ears. So it's really convenient for us to want something now because we have something to get from it, and we're disregarding the people who live there who've been asking for something different. So I don't mean to be crass, and I don't mean this to be difficult, this is my last parting word. I'm just asking you guys, please don't piss on my leg and tell me it's raining, because that's what this is.
Sylvia, thank you. I just have to be equal with everybody. I'm just trying to be fair. Trying to be fair to everybody.
Next is Janice Gary.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me this evening. I'm here to talk about whether or not transect zones should have the criteria of 10 acres. I believe that's what's on the agenda. I have the very good fortune of living in Oakview Neighborhood, which is an urban neighborhood, pardon me, a mile up the street, and one of the wonderful things about it is it's a very walkable, bikeable neighborhood. I've known many residents in our neighborhood who have never had an automobile, because we can walk to our stores, we can walk to the various things we need to do. I'm aware that many people in Gainesville do not have that kind of opportunity, because when Gainesville was built, it was built on the idea of love of the automobile and traveling everywhere. We now know that that isn't the smartest way to build cities anymore, that it's better to build them in pockets where people are able to walk or bike to the resources they need. At the time that 10 acres was put in as a criteria, it might have made sense. I don't think anybody in the room probably knows exactly what the logic was on that, but it probably made sense at that time. It doesn't make sense anymore. We have grown. We have a lot more people, and as one gentleman pointed out, we're going to expect a lot more people in the next decade. And we can either plan for the future, or we can be overwhelmed by the results of the future. And it makes sense to me to drop the 10-acre transect zone, that's a huge parcel of property in our city limits, and use that as an opportunity for building more mobile, bikeable, walkable nuggets in the city for our citizens to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kali Blom.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'd be willing to wager all of my 3.85 GPA during my master's in planning, that I know what I talk about when I say this is spot zoning, and you've heard some other planners tell you the same. I don't think there's anyone here more qualified than those of us who've studied planning so closely to tell you that that is the fact. It seems pure folly, so shortly after spending millions of dollars to narrow South Main Street, now to dump another 200 or so vehicles into it. Is this a disaster plan? Excuse me, disasters are things that happen by accident and spur of the moment. This is a planned mess-up. I can't wait to go to Depot Park and hear and see small children say, what's that giant thing over there? Why is that part of, why is that near the park? Do you think you can explain it? I haven't followed all the discussion about this proposed project, but I don't recall hearing anything about affordable housing in this project. In case people don't realize, affordable housing is when we're talking about providing people who are somewhere 30, 50, or 80% of area median income to get in without spending more than 30% of their income on rent and utilities. I like to say "and utilities" since I am on the board of the Housing Authority, and we think utilities is an essential part of considering people's housing expense. So you're throwing up this elite tower to destroy the profile from Depot Park, has nothing to do with its surroundings, putting it on a tiny spot where there cannot be transitions, and for, for money. Because somebody with big money wants to spend big, the velocity of money is outpacing the speed of our lives. We want to have a decent environment. Thank you.
Next is Paula Stamer. Thank you.
If you haven't signed up to speak yet, there's forums on either of these little tables right here. Just fill it out and give it to the clerk, and she'll get to the queue. Can you announce that name again, Madam Clerk?
Paula Stamer.
Oh, there you go.
Perfect.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Mayor and Ms. Chestnut, thank you. I'm here this evening to oppose the petition. It seems that every time some provisions are added to growth management plans or the comprehensive plan, and there's nice verbiage about the environment, protecting trees and neighborhoods, those things really exist on somebody else's hit list. They're really just targets for the next time around to be done away with. People are here talking about growth management, intelligent planning. The fundamental reason we do that is to provide ourselves and our community with livable, sustainable environment. And yet, the City Commission seems to be galloping towards cutting down the trees, eradicating the green, minimizing the green space, increasing the traffic, and having people pile on top of themselves in tall buildings that are inappropriate for this environment. There are other ways of managing the flow of people, so you're not constantly nibbling at the fringes on what may or may not be easier to protect. County governments and other city governments aren't necessarily going to protect it just because you decided not to develop it. And so the city has often made these arguments, and now it seems to be nowhere in sight. No one, no one has made this argument about how it's going to make the city more livable, it's going to make it easier for everybody. Yeah, if you, if your job happens to be in one of those towers, then yes, it'll be easier if you only have to walk a block, but that doesn't mean the consequence of that makes it easier for the rest of the community. And I think you're slowly destroying the lovely features of this town, particularly its environment. That environment helps sustain us. It helps protect our water. Overdevelopment destroys all those things. So I'm surprised that this is before you with any kind of support, given how roundly people turned out to object to a more recent development.
Thank you, Ms. Stamer. Thanks for being with us tonight.
So I hope you will take those things into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Next is Nathan Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Nathan Scott. So I'm very concerned about the three ordinances or three agenda items tonight on first reading. I want to stand with my neighbors in opposition to this. I'm sure that you've heard a lot, I've heard a lot, even though I was at the UAB meeting before this, came over, heard a lot of speeches from the dais. But I was asked to come, you know, there's obviously community concern about the commission's action. Tanna Silver's done a great job, Kim Tanzer, Fay Williams, Kali Blom, and the rest of the folks here tonight. They're just asking a commission that's elected by and for the people to listen to the people. But unfortunately, the commission listens to developers, doesn't seem to want to listen to its constituents. We have the Montrossi, known as the standard. You didn't listen to the develop, to the neighborhoods then, you didn't listen to suburban heights, you didn't listen to Royal Park the other night, and you don't listen to really anyone. It doesn't matter, even your own supporters. So with respect to 200877, again, I think you've heard the piecemeal spot zoning concern. I echo that. Again, 200878, maximum land use, right next to Depot Park, 00879, upzoning to maximum density, height, and uses. You're hearing from reasonable people, rational people tonight, that they have concerns with this, and I hope that you will listen to your constituents. I think that's what is lacking, with all due respect from good city governance here, is that you don't seem to be concerned about the plight of low-income households, hard-working Gainesville families, local businesses, protecting neighborhoods, listening to constituents. All those are foundations and pillars of, of good governance, and I think that's lacking. You know, I don't think it's lacking with Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker and Commissioner Chestnut, because they've shown consistently they're willing to listen to their neighbors and constituents for the, the, the good of the people. But what we have here, in my judgment, and I've been coming to commission meetings for a decade trying to get you guys to listen, so I know you're not going to listen to me, but you should at least listen to some other folks, because even your own supporters right now are very angry at you. This has got to be the most dysfunctional commission in the history of Gainesville. So please take the time to listen to these folks that have come out tonight and express their concerns. I have the same concerns. And so I would just ask you to please respectfully listen and do the will of your constituents.
That's everyone we have signed up in the chambers, but I know we have folks waiting up.
Okay, yeah, so let's turn it over to, do we have Adam with us tonight?
Yes, you do, Mr. Mayor. I'm here with you.
And Adam, I understand you might have taken one more trip around the sun.
Oh, my goodness, how does that get out? Today is my birthday.
I have a bird on my shoulder.
Oh.
Happy birthday, Adam.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the gesture. So first caller, we have seven or eight here, and the first up is Tanna Silva. Tanna, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. A lot of people went through two years of meetings, site visits, and hearings on form-based code in 2014, 2015, and the reason this ordinance is in this meeting is because the city hasn't had any further discussion. There's no confusion about that. It's depriving you and the city from background information and collective decision-making since 2016, technocratic shift that favors big interests. This is becoming a pattern arising from private entities and US rather than from public discussion. There's been no public discussion of transect zoning since 2015, and no reason to rush any of these proposed ordinances, every reason to deny them. Mr. Coffey has counted votes, and I'm sorry you're put in the position of deciding all this without the benefit of collective input from 2013, 2014, and 2015, much less since then. Whatever it's called, you're being asked to allow random spot zoning throughout the city's nearly 64 square miles to benefit one property owner. This only spreads upzoning to outlined areas for no purpose, and it's just the start of really bad proposals. The city has had new urbanist planning and activity areas for decades. This proposed ordinance perverts the intent of transect zones. Form-based code was a trend that has been poorly implemented in some places as cookie-cutter urban design. At best, it was to have transect zones that would step down from high to low intensity. Allowing transect zones of any size anywhere would defeat the purpose, introduce unpredictability for everyone, present and future. In effect, it would unzone the city. Building anything anywhere would have obvious and yet, and not yet obvious consequences. Among them, more work for staff that's already fielding a torrent of big development applications. But staff has pushed them anyway for nothing in exchange. A real danger that spot zoning would exacerbate is use of opportunity-zoned tax break projects. The city urgently needs to bring those under control, not lobby Washington for more. The staff report is flawed in several ways. Mr. Calderon talks about transect areas, but this ordinance would allow scattershot small isolated transect properties, not areas. Examples he showed were built without transect zoning. The staff report says spot zoning is a tool, but it's not good planning. It's the opposite. It's a lack of planning. The source staff sites about lot size doesn't address transect zoning. Strong towns with staff sites does not advocate upzoning or form-based code generally, and certainly not isolated spot zoning. Its founder analyzed the way cities have done rezoning, and he and many others advocate for incremental growth, as does Gainesville's own 2013 Power District redevelopment plan that includes these properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Kim Tanzer. Kim, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am calling in and asking that you deny this motion. It is clear, listening to your comments and to the comments of Mr. Calderon, Mr. Coffey, and Mr. Person, that either you do not understand new urbanism and transect zoning, or you are willingly misapplying its concepts. In new urbanism, and friends of mine and professional colleagues invented new urbanism. In new urbanism, everything is part of a transect. A farm is a T1 transect, an urban core is a T6 transect, according to the SMART code defined by New Urbanists. What you're doing is spot zoning and confusing dense urban development with the word transect. That's not what it means. I would be happy to speak with you at length. It's more than a three-minute conversation. I have friends and colleagues who have spent 30 years talking about this for more than 40 hours a week, but what you're doing is spot zoning if you approve this ordinance, and I am very sorry to see that Mr. Calderon, Mr. Persons, and especially Mr. Coffey are willing to use the term transect when what they mean is one kind, one kind of transect, which is the most dense, and more dense than urban, than Gainesville even should have in the new urbanism paradigm. You need to educate yourselves, please, and in the meantime, deny this motion and ask people who really know what new urbanism is, and I'd be happy to give you a list of 10 who are the national experts in the term, to come and talk to the city of Gainesville, because you unfortunately seem not to know what you're talking about. Deny this motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, next speaker is Alfredo Morales. Mr. Morales, you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking my call. Well, for calling against this motion, I live just a couple blocks from South West Main Street, and I've seen what all the development and construction has already done. I mean, like, it's hard to be saying anything that hasn't already been said by multiple people on this call, but not only is this proposal, like, actually dangerous because it creates more construction, creates more noise, I don't know. I know some of the Commissioners were there at the Porter's Quarters meeting yesterday, and one of the things that was brought up is the noise. and one of the things that was brought up is the noise level and allowing for stuff like this to happen, and just generally citing developers when they come to basically redeveloping all of South Main. They're creating more noise, more construction, more pollution for the rest of the stuff already listed, but that's just one element. Other people have commented on the other elements. Something else I want to point out is that Depot Park was something that was funded, built, and constructed and enjoyed by the public through public money, through taxes, through grants, and this is something that developers are trying to take advantage of just to make a profit and put a horrible 14-story building right next to a park that was built by the people, for the people supposedly of Gainesville. Another thing I want to point out is that we're having this discussion, which is going to impact, I mean, a lot of things, such as traffic patterns, but people's daily lives in the Tuesday evening, completely inaccessible to a lot of the people who are most affected by this, people in Porter's Quarters, but also, yeah, like, any resident that is listening there. It's really hard to make it to one of these meetings, and the city assignment is accessible at all. We're having one call on this issue, basically, when this should be, like, a discussion that we're having over the course of weeks, if not months. I saw the city commissioners at the Porter's Quarters meeting yesterday, but not all, so it's clear that not everybody there has feedbacks from the community, or is getting feedback from the community, or something like this wouldn't even be on the agenda. I'm extremely disappointed just to see that, like, there's many people have to call, like, call in and take time out of their busy day just to tell you not to do something that should be very obvious. I also want to thank all the people that brought in some of the math stuff that's over my head. Thank you, July, for pointing out the bank gap and, like, the effect of this is going to have on the city. I think from every angle, it shows that this is a very bad move, so I'm urging the city commission to vote against it, but also urging the city commission to really see where the problem lies in all this and how exciting developers over the past couple of years have led to this public outcry that we have now, and refuse to do anything against it, that the public development is only going to make it worse, and the city's already under a lot of pressure and only making it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Next speaker is Susan Milbrough. Susan, you have three minutes. Susan, are you out there? Susan Milbrough, are you out there? All right, I'm going to come back to you, Susan. Hold the line. I'm going to go next to Rachel Iannelli. I apologize if I've gotten her name as pronounced, Ms. Iannelli, but you have three minutes.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, good. Thanks for hearing me. My name is Rachel Iannelli. I'm a long-term resident of Gainesville, 35-plus years. I'm a business owner and a homeowner, specifically out in southeast Gainesville, just beyond the proposed site of this 14-story building. I do believe it's no mistake that this zoning change proposal focuses on the periphery of a number of historically black neighborhoods, Porters on the north, but also Sugar Hill, Wicked Estates to the south. These neighborhoods have been neglected for countless years. In 88, I started renting a place out by Lincoln Estate. Now I own a house out there that I built in 2004. This was a so-called bad neighborhood for forever, and now it isn't, because the rails-to-trails went through, and all the fancy people now want to take care of all the green spaces out there that is just a lot of neglected stuff that we have so cherished and also worked through as neighborhood people back there, black, white, and otherwise. There was no sidewalks in various places, especially right adjacent to this building that you are proposing, no natural gas lines out there, on a creek system, no one's even talking about that, a 14-story building on the creek. That's cute. What's that going to do to the watershed that's going into the prairie? The Caden Museum folks have already said, in other contexts, that the park is for the people, for the people that are further southeast.
Uh-oh. It looks like we've lost Rachel somehow. All righty, let's move right to Mark Goldstein. Mr. Goldstein, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Mark Goldstein here. Somehow I get the feeling, and I've had it for a number of years, because people in the audience represent me better than you do, with the possible exception of a minority of speakers on the commission. You've turned this town into a place that a lot of people find difficult to live in. It used to be terrific. We had five people in the commission, and we tended to agree regardless of our party and our interests. Somehow or other, the leadership of this community has turned it into what has been described tonight by others far better than I could, by traffic, by volume, impossible to live in, canyons. You sit there, you listen, your plan boards since 2013, listen, it's cordial, and then they send us off without any change. It's very unfortunate that you are the people who got elected by a minority, because what you've done to the town is practically irreversible. I can only hope that when you leave, you replace you with five, not seven, with five people who care enough to make this city inhabitable again for people who wish to walk, bike, and not try to cross impossible streets, with you showing, like, for political reasons, saying you should slow down traffic. You can't drive in the city. You've become the way of Orlando, as predicted. Your plan board and the people you listen to and the moneyed interests absolutely control you, and I know what you're doing, and I'm extremely upset about it. Again, the people in the audience represent me far better than you do. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I'm going to turn back to Rachel Iannelli again for another 90 seconds or so, if we could. Rachel, we lost you somehow. I don't know how, but you've got about another minute now, if you'd like.
I thank you. So while this whole area back there has been neglected, and basically it's been untouched and now is pristine, now it's cute for the rest of the town to run a bike line through it and then to start building luxury housing on it, because that is what you are proposing. A 14-story building over a creek is very pretty, and we are not, the regular people are not going to be able to afford anything like that. The southeast Fourth Avenue construction has been going on for God knows how long, several years prior to COVID. It's just, it's a ploy. It's a ploy, I feel like, that you are making it difficult out there for everybody, and then you can just muscle in and open your Pandora's box with your new ordinances and your motions. You know, we're watching you, and also four of you on the commission are about to say goodbye to your position. What's the fucking rush?
Well, okay, that's enough, Adam.
What is the rush?
Adam, enough.
I know.
We are not going to allow uncivil discussion, behavior, or language. Absolutely not.
I apologize for that.
You were not the one that were the transgressor.
I know. All righty, next speaker is Virginia Crest. Ms. Crest, you have three minutes. Virginia, you out there? Don't know where Virginia went. Let's go back. Yeah?
All right. So I've lived here for, I've lived in Gainesville for 52 years. I am now not living in the city, thank God, because of the high rises and the congestion and the parking, you know, fees. I cannot believe that this proposal has come to the, to the attention of the county, of the city commission. Thank God for Cynthia Chestnut. She is absolutely right. We who have lived here for years and years and years do not like what is happening. I am not happy to it. I want it to go away. I would wish to move back to the inner city so that I could be close to the, all of the wonderful things that the city of Gainesville, Gainesville provides for us, but because of these high rises and high-rise apartments, I will not be able to afford it. This is absolutely ridiculous agenda, which is being proposed. I do not know who is on the city commission, who would vote for this. This is absolutely absurd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crest. All righty, there are no more callers, but I'd like to turn back to Susan Milbrough, see if she has found her voice. Susan, if you're out there, you've got three minutes. Susan? Susan, it looks like you were trying to speak for a quick second there. All righty, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting nothing, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, where did you have any...
Wait, wait, we have one, hold on, hold on, hold on. We have one late, late, late caller. Can I turn to one more, please?
Sure.
Okay. Christina Fields. Christina, three minutes.
Hello?
Yep. Go ahead, you've got three minutes. Yep, introduce yourself. You've got three minutes.
I have... Okay, thank you. This is Donald Field calling, and I'm calling in opposition. My issue mainly is that the comprehensive plan doesn't seem to include at least what you're proposing here tonight to unleash, which is to walkable neighborhoods without the defined walkable areas to connect with some kind of transit ultimately. So I think former Mayor Gordon has it right, that what you will generate is various areas that will then just grow together, like, looking at Petri tree, that dish that grows mold, and you'll see it just kind of forming in areas, and eventually the whole thing is covered with high rises, and you will get the canyons that you allegedly don't want. And the, and I believe you should let this, let this go. There are four people on the dais that are laying ducks. I've heard all five of these people who like development always say, well, we don't want hamstring or hamper the future conditions of being able to create the city that the people want, for, like, for instance, taxes and so on. And yet, you're willing to pass this motion tonight, you're leaning that way, it seems to me, the way I read the dais. So we'll see what will happen, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. It looks like we have yet another caller. You just jumped in. I don't know this person's name, but if you could please introduce yourself, you do have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michael Neighbors. I've been a business owner in downtown Gainesville since 2004, and also a commercial property owner since 2008. From my perspective, I feel that many of the nice developments in Gainesville have taken place in the west part of the city, although there's some really great activity in downtown. There's still challenges with keeping tenants, as well as having the type of foot traffic that is really needed for downtown Gainesville to be robust over the long term. So I wanted to support this project. I feel that, you know, any development that we can have in the downtown district is just really healthy for the city. I also believe that downtown Gainesville is truly like the nicest, most unique real estate in the city. And so for people that are visiting Gainesville, I feel like it's important to have the traffic that's necessary to make it a really nice, functioning district. So I wanted to support this project. Additionally, I believe that the Depot Park area is obviously very nice for the citizens, and the current use of Depot Park in this property, this subject property that's under discussion and consideration, being that it is under industrial use, that could present some questionable businesses that could go into that type of zoning. So it does appear, you know, from my perspective, I think this project would be healthy for the district and overall good for the city if it was rezoned to downtown. You know, the bridge between Depot Park and downtown, it's pretty obvious, they're, you know, close together, and I think that it would just be good for the downtown, the core downtown district to have this rezoning approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors. The callers keep coming. We now have Harry Shaw next. Mr. Shaw, you've got three minutes.
Hello, I'm Harry Shaw, and I'm calling to object to the proposal being discussed. I am sheerly alarmed of others, and I'm partly alarmed because I have objection not only to the proposal, but I have objection to the process. The process, once again, is one that has, was poorly advertised, and, and then after it was advertised and people were rallied to be present and to make their voices heard, the explanation was garbled and inadequate and unclear. And for that reason, I am even more alarmed. Issues that affect a wide number of people should be explained and studied by a wide number of people. Even the Affordable Care Act had to be explained extensively before it gained approval. And once it gained approval, of course, it had to be made to convince even those for whom it was a benefit. Now, I'm concerned also about the lack of attention to, and adherence to the wishes of the public and the citizens. I haven't heard one person, yes, I have, two people to be exact, who favored the proposal, but they did not show any great awareness of what it really was. So the technical aspects of this proposal are not in any way made clear, and in terms of whether or not this would be anything positive, even in terms of the aesthetic and whether or not it would be attractive, what we would have is a continuation of a Soviet cityscape. Gainesville would look like the Soviet Union in the 1950s. This is a boondoggle for the commissioners, or some of the commissioners, let me say, and a bonanza for developers.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
And I've been for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Our next speaker, Andrea Rizzo. Ms. Rizzo, you've got three minutes.
Hello?
Yep.
I don't know if actually in the 1950s. Hello?
Ms. Rizzo, you have the phone.
This is a boondoggle for the commissioners, or some of the commissioners.
You need to turn your volume down on your terminal or on your TV, Ms. Rizzo.
Yeah, sorry, I was confused, because I just heard you say, I just started to say I'm muted, but then I couldn't hear him.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Yeah, I see there's a little bit of a lag now. Hi, my name is Andrea Rizzo, and I have been a Gainesville resident for 11 years. I think most of the relevant comments against this motion have been made, but I want to add my two cents as someone who, one, lives downtown near Depot Park, and, two, exclusively relies on biking, walking, and public transit combined for transportation. I do not have a car. That means every single day, with every errant, commute, appointment, meetup, et cetera, I experience facility from drivers due to carelessness, but also encouraged by dilapidated infrastructure. As we know, buildings like the Standard, the Hub, whatever the swamp graveyard is now, all of these are... now, all of these are built with accompanying monstrous parking garages. Living in the urban core does not dissuade car ownership or ridership when we have poor safety streets and abysmal public transit. You may recall my name. Just last week, I emailed every single one of you about an incident where I was almost hit by USPS vehicle. Yes, USPS, on North 16th Avenue, Main Street, when I had the right of way as a pedestrian. By the way, none of you responded to my email. I am extremely concerned about your consideration for supposed density without spending anywhere near an appropriate and proportionate amount of resources on public transit or improving safety for cyclists, pedestrians. Please do not utilize people like me, historically low-income, and a public transit rider to support this disaster of a project. Not only would I not be able to afford to live there, but this reckless development actually puts my life in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzo, next caller, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name if I do, Betty Smokavitas. Betty, you've got three minutes.
Hello, yes, you know, you know who it is, it's Betty Smokavitas. Thank you so much for staying so late. Very briefly, I'm calling you all the way from Canada. I just gave up half an hour of what could be my mother's last day. I left the hospital, and I came here to implore you, implore you not to do this. You've heard from everyone here, and most of all, I mean, I agree with, with my colleague, my Harry Shaw, this is really bad Soviet planning. That's what it looks like, these, what people describe as canyons and these enormous parking garages. You said you didn't want to bring cars into the city, and yet you build these giant garages next to the student complexes. We don't need anything like this around Depot Park. It is not the downtown, and I live in Kirkwood. I will be negatively impacted, but mostly, I really hate to see what's happening to the city that I've lived in for 33 years. So again, I implore you, do not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, and speaking for everyone here, we wish your mother speed to recovery or healing thoughts. Mr. Mayor, I think that is our last caller, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Ms. Kastner, do you have anybody else signing up?
Okay, so thank you, everybody who participated in this round of public comment on the first item, which is a petition to amend with the addition and strikes that you see up here on the screen, so adding some more specific requirements and characteristics for the transect zonings or urban T-zone, and then, I think, more consequentially, removing the 10-acre minimum lot size to get that transect zoning. So with that, we'll go back to the commission for any further questions or deliberations, and then move to a vote. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for your comments. Mr. Persson, could I borrow you for a minute? Or five? Welcome again. For everyone's benefit, because I'm not perfect, can you lay people-friendly, explain what a transect zone is, and why anyone would want it?
Sure. A transect zone, it's actually defined in our, in our code, both what a transect is, which is, not, not to get into the background, but originally, it's an ecological term to describe the transition from different habitats. In an urban form, it's to describe essentially the change in urban form across the environment. And that form is typically expressed in things like uses, building heights, setbacks, lot usage. In, in our code, we have two types, or two sort of families, if you will, of zoning districts. We have transect zoning districts, which were adopted by the commission back in roughly 2017, after, you know, several years of, of discussion work in the community. And those transect zones, by and large, replaced a lot of the special area plans that we had before. I think one of the speakers had mentioned sort of sub-area plans as a planning tool. The city had been previously sort of divided up in the areas on the map that Mr. Calderon had indicated into different sub-areas. So in 2017, the commission essentially adopted transect zones, which in some ways mimic a lot of the form standards that we had in those special area plans. Those are things like the massing of buildings, the placement of buildings relative to the street and sidewalk, the, you know, the glazing the windows on the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Those transect zoning standards that we have in the code today are, are different from the other family of zoning that we have, which is essentially like conventional zoning or Euclidean zoning, you may have heard it referred to, and that is typically very use-based, meaning that it has a long list of uses, what is and isn't allowed, but it lacks the form portion that we have in the transect zones. And transect zoning, generally in the city of Gainesville, is on the map that you saw, and it typically, historically, has replaced the special area plan areas that we have, but it generally represents the sort of core areas of the city. That's probably a long-winded answer to your question.
But pretty laypeople-friendly, thank you. Would we, would you say that those standards apply to transect zoning as opposed to the other zoning? Is that usually a higher standard on how to do things like streets, pedestrian sidewalks, lighting?
Yeah, typically, your transect zoning are going to have greater requirements for wider sidewalks, typically more glazing, more ground floor windows, higher level of articulation, and, and more sort of delves into some of the architecture of the building, without necessarily getting into stylistic details. And then, is also generally higher density, higher residential densities are allowed typically in transect zoning, and also typically higher, like taller building heights. So, yeah.
Thank you, and I think this will be the, the last question I have, and then it'll just be comments all that you said. What advertising, if any, is required for, what is it, a land development code amendment? And did we meet those standards?
Yes, we did. Typically, text changes to the city's land development code is just like any other ordinance. So there's a public hearing, both at the plan board and at the commission level. You can consider, you know, text changes, generally speaking, with like, with your legislative hat on, meaning that the commission generally has broad discretion whether or not to change its own code. At the end of the day, this code is the city commission's code and the city's code, so you have a lot of sort of leeway in making changes to it.
Thank you, Mr. Persson.
Yep.
I'm actually really glad about all the glazing and windows in storefront, because as someone who did live in Soviet Union, constructed buildings, nothing in this city looks like that, so thank God for that. You know, I think the choices that we make, we don't really see the outcome of them. As Ms. Barr said, you know, Arlington went up back in the 80s, and maybe that wasn't the best use of it, but those were choices that commissioners in the 80s made, and, you know, they didn't have to actually necessarily stay here, maybe they left somewhere else, maybe they're still here. But we don't often get to see the consequences of our choices 40 years later. We should, because people will ideally still come after us. I don't make choices for myself, I'm making choices for my children. And I can't make the decision of, don't make choices for people coming after, because I do believe, based on the census, our housing stock grew 3% less than our population. So like it or not, we need more housing, one way or the other. Unless we're going to advocate for mass sterilization, there will be more people. Like, that's, that's a harsh reality, like, there will be more people. I can't put a wall at the border of Gainesville and say, don't come here, that's not going to happen. Transect zoning, however, gives us a creative and beneficial way to do that, which is why I'm in support of this, and it's not related to just this project on South Main, it is anywhere. If you are requiring someone who wants to create a transect zone to have 10 acres, and as some folks said, it is somebody with more money than God, they can buy up property and push out whole neighborhoods to get those 10 acres. People have that money, they can just do it. And I think that is somehow worse than saying you could petition to do it on three acres, on four acres, because now you've saved and spared six acres of families from being pushed out, so someone could build their project. So not requiring that 10 acres solves it and reduces a lot of that harm. I am looking at this completely separate from the South Main project. I'm looking at where it could actually help throughout the city. And looking at it in that vacuum, I see it as a wonderful opportunity to remove something that was arbitrary and, at this point, not helping anyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming and speaking. I know it is very late, and so I will try to be brief. What I would like to do, first, I want to communicate, it is difficult to bifurcate this ordinance, because it is, the petition is initiated by the agent for the development that is following this item. So I'm going to vote against this, because I don't support the initial development proposal to begin with. What I would like to do, though, is I would like to offer our staff the opportunity to come back to the city commission, whether it's through our comprehensive plan updates or whether it's through a text change amendment. I would like for our staff to be able to come back to the city commission with their own version of a draft ordinance that could at least meet at the middle where we're getting the benefits that we want as a city from transect zoning, but are perhaps not just completely eliminating altogether the minimum requirements. So I know we've got a motion on the floor, at least right now, but those were my thoughts, and whether we agree or disagree, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of the neighbors who came out tonight to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application. I won't be supporting this application either, and I want to be very clear about why not. We don't have a plan. And I say that to my colleagues, because I believe we are at a critical moment in the life of this city, and we have an opportunity to make life-altering decisions for generations to come with the policies that we include in our comprehensive plan. And we don't have a plan. It's not done. It's an exciting opportunity to me. I usually try to reserve my comments until after I've heard from neighbors, because for me, that's always something that's important. I had already heard from a number of you prior to this conversation, I had already been aware of what this was, and of course, my greatest concern is what this potentially clears the way for. I simply could not in good conscience vote for something with that type of unpredictability when we have the control to shape the policy that will lead us towards the equitable Gainesville that we say we really want. Last night, we had the opportunity to sit with the Porter's Quarters community in what I thought was an incredible meeting. And once again, I want to take the opportunity to thank our interim city manager for helping to facilitate that conversation. It was a familiar conversation, but something was just a little bit different. We talked about the changes that we want to see, but we also talked about the importance of the community being involved in those conversations. We always say that. But in the Royal Park conversation last week, I made a statement that I'm really looking forward to us implementing, and that is making sure that we involve the community in meaningful ways in the major decisions that we make. That can sometimes be harrowing, because these are major decisions, life-altering decisions, and emotions and tensions always run high, but it's important to do. I'm concerned that in looking at how communities are impacted by these types of developments, we may not have considered a number of things. We may not have considered how we need to be mindful in effectively stabilizing existing communities and staving off the harmful effects and impacts of gentrification. I'm concerned that we may not have considered that we have a downtown master plan that is still conceptual, we've only entered into conversations about the power district. There are so many things that are just on the table as ideas and concepts that we have the opportunity to shape, and I want this commission, if you will, to take the opportunity to let's shape this. I don't want developers to control how Gainesville looks. I want the citizens to be a meaningful part of that, our neighbors to be a meaningful part of that. I want this commission to take the reins and allow the community to lead us in what this city looks like. And while I could talk a little longer, I promise I won't. I do not support this application. I would like to add this. To Commissioner Chestnut's earlier substitute motion, if you will, if the opportunity does present itself for that to be something that we're able to consider, Commissioner Chestnut, I would support your idea to come back to a special meeting of sorts, where we bring the community together to have this discussion. I believe that was somewhere along the lines of what you may have suggested. It is a conversation that we began last week in the Royal Park conversation, so you would certainly have my support in that motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a bit of housekeeping, I know it's something that you've been big on before. I don't appreciate people contacting my parents and insulting them, and then laughing at me when I ask them to not contact my parents, to say whatever they might think about me. You can have your opinions, but I don't think our families are fair game to be attacked. So if that's funny to people, I'm really concerned, and I ask you to get help, but please don't come after our families, they're not the ones making decisions up here, they didn't choose, but we did. So just common decency.
That's absolutely off limits, a level of harassment that is threatening, and I would definitely follow up with our police department in that, because, yes, that, that is, that is abhorrent.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Yeah, if we could just not shout out in the chambers. She, she didn't attack anybody, she didn't. She, I didn't hear her name anything. Commissioner Chestnut, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I cannot stress enough how important it is for us to listen to our neighbors and to go back to them with this conversation. People have said over and over that they've been left out of the conversation, and I think we owe it to them. We owe it to them to, to help them, to bring them along as we are planning their city with what's happening in their city, and they need to have a voice, and that has not happened. That's not what I'm seeing. That, that was, you all are very fortunate, you haven't been on the campaign trail in some time, but coming off of the campaign trail, this is what I heard over and over. We want to be heard, we want to be listened to, we want our voice at the table, and I just cannot stress that enough. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, since we're going down this road, I am going to, I plan to, later in the meeting, when we've taken care of what's on the agenda and member comment, offer a much larger motion about the, the greater area that we're looking at here, and it's something I've been working on for months, and, and for more than a year, actually, and it's probably not the best time to roll it out, but it seems like we need to, go ahead and roll it out. Just that, I, I will be making a motion larger than this after the agenda items are finished.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the petition, which
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the petition, which includes the changes that you see up here on the screen. And so, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Chestnut?
No.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola? Commissioner Heisantos?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye, that motion passes for three with Duncan Walker, Chestnut, and Ariola in dissent, which brings us to our next item. Madam Clerk?
The next item is two zero zero eight seven eight, land use change, 4.82 acres of property located at 1015 South Main Street. Ordinance number two zero zero eight seven eight, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the land use category of approximately 4.82 acres of property generally located at 1015 South Main Street as more specifically described in this ordinance from industrial IND to urban core UC, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Calderon, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission, good evening. Lawrence Calderon, Department of Sustainable Development. Mr. Mayor, having this first petition addressed and passed takes us to the opportunity for, to consider a land use and a zoning change. This petition is the request for the land use change by the applicant to change the land use from industrial to urban core, which urban core is a land use which is part of the transect, and as you can see where the property is located. The petition comprises four parcels, one, two, three, four, as you see located in this area. This area of the city has been a focus of the Gainesville City Commission for a number of years. The entire area was an industrial area. The city spent a lot of money and investment to try to address the contamination which has resulted in the Depot Park and some of the other developments that's occurring around the area. Mr. Chair, the proposed land use for this, the existing land use, sorry, as you can see here, and you can see the surrounding uses. As you can see, the transect type land uses are shown around here, and the, all of the other areas on this side are all industrial. In some sense, this park area is somewhat considered a part of the overall transect in the sense that transect development, part of the, the element that makes it function adequately and efficiently is the existence of parks and open spaces and people-type spaces, as you can see in here. The subject area you could see is more or less isolated from the remainder of the industrial area, and it's more oriented towards the development that you, you see on this side. The proposed zoning, sorry, the proposed land use is UC, which is urban core, and that's the land use that's proposed for this area. The surrounding, the, the area has a number of features, as we see here, that makes it important and a compatible request to change. It, it already has transect characteristics, as you can see by the improvements that exist along a main street. The surrounding residential, you can't see it here, but there are residential around this area, and you can see some residential area. The area has historical characteristics in and around it. The, the, the urban form is developing into what the transect type urban form that we look to that enhances and encourages the, the transect type development. We have the, the Depot Park, which forms a, a central people-type place that focuses a lot of activity in this area. You have the Hawthorne Trail, and the, the one thing about the southern area and industrial area is that it's a dying industrial area. It's, it's, it's kind of barely fledging in terms of the, the intensity and amount of activity that occurs in there. There's a lot of more or less outdoor storage and warehousing, those types of uses that occur. So it's a significant potential to infuse the area in terms of the general growth and direction that the city intends for, for that area. Oh, sorry. The purpose of this land use is to, the land use itself is to capture the umbrella land use so that we could implement an underlying zoning that is consistent with what that zoning is. To facilitate redevelopment of the subject parcels in a manner that's consistent with the surrounding areas, and the, the change itself is compatible and consistent with the park and what's going on out there. We're talking about the land use. It is a logical action resulting from the catalytic effect of what's happened in Depot Avenue. You see, we talk about the GRU building that was referenced many times. We have the RTS facility. We have the RTS bus stop in this area. A lot of activities and facilities that, that people and walking-oriented that leads to these types of facilities. What's happening there is a true form-based code designing. A major feature of transect planning is to incorporate a variety of residential and commercial spaces into a single neighborhood entity. One parcel in itself does not make a transect, but the opportunity to combine parcels and to join the existing downtown area and the remaining areas is what makes it important, and that opportunity for mixed use lies here in the sense of a land use which is UC. What we have here in industrial is not the type of use that is going to engender the type of growth that we see occurring along South Main to stimulate additional development. The same humdrum type of industrial uses that occurs here is what's going to happen, and the type of uses we have is car storage, the, a bunch of other type of industrial type of uses occurring in this area. Staff reviewed the petition in the context of what is required to be considered in terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Policy 4.1.3 states that we need to do that. So I will go through this list quickly. I've already shown that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've seen a number of goals, policies that are listed in here, I'm sorry. The, the environmental impacts and constraints to the area will be removed in terms of the possibility of inducing additional industrial impact. One thing that we, it supports the urban infill and redevelopment area. It, it affects affordable housing. It impacts affordable housing in terms of providing additional areas for housing. No one factor is the, 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 the key to affordable housing, but compiling a number of elements leads to affordable housing, and one aspect here is creating opportunities for additional units would be one of the elements that would enhance and create affordable housing. The impacts on the transportation system. We already see that Main Street is undergoing significant impact. We see that Depot Avenue is undergoing impact. There is north, south, and east-west connectivity from that area, across that area, and facilitating transportation needs in, in, within the general area. There is a need for additional acreage for transect type development as we grow the city. We want to discourage urban sprawl, and if you do not have an opportunity to develop property close to and within, close proximity to the already thriving transect area, then we, we are losing those opportunities for development to rural areas which the comprehensive plan strongly discourages. We need job creations, and as you could see here, this type of development that's occurring here is going to facilitate this type of development. The need to modify land use categories and development to attain a subdivision pattern that could facilitate the development in there and consistent with Florida statutes. So we see those factors are all addressed in the, the cat, the, the criteria for addressing land use, and we feel that staff has made a determination that it meets those requirements. So with that, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is that, the City Plan Board's recommendation is that you approve the petition. Staff's recommendation to the, to the Plan Board was to approve the petition, and staff's recommendation to you is to approve the petition and file the recommendation of approval, sorry, file the recommendation to the City Attorney's Office to draft appropriate ordinances. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will attempt to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Calderon. I do believe we have a question from Commissioner Ward, and then we'll invite the applicant up to. Okay, then we'll invite the applicant up to give their presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still David Coffey here this evening representing the applicant. And hopefully, Mr. Calderon will put these slides up for us. He's kindly agreed to handle that for us.
Give me a minute that I get oriented here.
Okay, and while he's doing that, Mr. Stringfellow is not well and didn't want to be in the room with us, being unwell at the moment, but is available to participate by Zoom. And I don't know how you handle that, Mr. Mayor, but at, at some point, even now, to fill the time while the slides are being prepared, if he's attempting to call in right now, it would be wonderful if we could bring him in.
Sure. Madam Clerk, is that something you're able to do?
Mr. Coffey, can you see the screen and you can proceed at your leisure?
Okay, we don't, we don't have the presentation up yet, and we're also trying to get the applicant in on Zoom.
If the applicant's trying to join the Zoom meeting, he'll need to accept the prompt to be admitted. I think we might have him now.
And while that's happening, I'll move forward. And, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you, I would present both issues, the land use and zoning, so you don't have to hear my presentation twice, but primarily because they are inextricably linked. The UC land use designation can only be implemented by one generic zoning designation, and that is the DT zoning. There's the opportunity for public service and conservation, and also the, there's, there's a third one that's escaping my mind right now, that, oh, planned development, which is not being proposed. There's just one generic zoning, and that's the DT. And let me also point out and try to emphasize so that it's clear that there is no developer involved. There is no development planned. This is an application for a change in land use and zoning by a property owner who is not a developer, and it is responding to the substantial changes that have occurred in the area. Next slide. The next slide. Well, actually, if you stay on that slide for just one second. Wait a minute. Looks, looks like you are, okay. If you just stay there for one moment, and advance it so that we can see the property at issue outlined. There we go. You can see to the north of the park, which is just north of the parcels at issue, that the UC land use designation extends all the way to the north edge of the park at Depot Avenue as does the DT zoning. So that the only thing in between this parcel and existing UC and DT is the park, a public facility designation. Okay, next slide. Yes. And so the reason for this request is the opportunity that has been created through the implementation of your fundamental planning goals by way of dramatic improvements in the general area, and I'll focus more on that in a moment. And what this now makes possible is a significant expansion of housing in downtown, which at minimum indirectly promotes affordable housing. That's just the law of supply and demand, basic economics. It would, will ultimately if implementing UC and DT be a transit-oriented type of development made possible, which of course can reduce carbon footprint. Next investment, next slide. And so it is, in fact, these investments that have been made by the city that has changed the picture quite dramatically, and they are the investment in Depot Park. Next slide, which is illustrated by these two slides. And I will confess to having grandchildren in that slide. Next. And of course, the Cade, which is immediately adjacent. Next. And then this slide, which was kind of fun to put together because it really illustrates the amazing amount of investment that the city has made in this area that is really transforming the entire area. What you see there is the Depot Avenue and all the improvements made on Depot Avenue, South Main most recently, the Depot Park, of course, and even Sixth Street moving north. And each of those yellow dots are major investments in the form of roundabouts that really have helped to calm traffic and to move traffic in ways that have had the public really respond incredibly well. Every time I drive on Depot Avenue, I am amazed at the level of pedestrian and bicycle activity there all the time, even well into the evening. Next. So some of those investments include the Peanut, right next to PK Young. Next. Which, the next slide just shows you the before, what it used to look like for those who haven't experienced it, and then the after. Next. Depot Avenue, before and after. Next. The Sixth Street, which I mentioned just a moment ago, and the roundabout there at Depot Avenue and Sixth Street. Next. And then, of course, the most immediate area, Depot Avenue and Main Street. This is taken from the same location, before and after. Next. And then South Main, you can see just how dramatically that has changed, again with yet another roundabout. One more of, next, of the Main Street changes. Now, and, and then the next, just an aerial view of Depot Avenue and Depot Park. Next. Next slide. Thank you, right there. So all of those changes have really transformed the area. And what you see on the north is the Cade, or I should say on the top, the Cade, and then. What you see on the north is the Cade, or I should say on the top, the Cade, and then the property at issue. And it couldn't be more obvious, the incompatibility of the existing use with the new place that has been created there on South Main. Now, as I indicated to you in a letter explaining some of the history, back in 2014, before all of those improvements I just walked through, that you all ought to be very proud of, those Before all of those improvements were made, the owner of the property, the applicant, was approached by the city and encouraged to have the city change its zoning to a urban mixed-use development designation. And the owner declined, and did so for primarily two reasons. First, skepticism as to whether or not all these improvements that were being anticipated and discussed would ever happen. Well, they have happened, and they have certainly been dramatic. But then, secondly, because the development potential by the new proposed land use and zoning at the time was insufficient to overcome the economics of the property as it exists today. The property is held in trust for numerous family members who have been, whose family members before them had owned this property for a very, very long time. And the trustees have an obligation to ensure that any decisions that are made, whether it's a land use change or a zoning change, do not harm the beneficiaries. They have this fiduciary obligation, and they must ensure that whatever change is made is beneficial to the beneficiaries. And so that previous land use and zoning that the city proposed was rejected. Well, after seeing all of the change, the owners went back, the trustees, went to the city and asked, well, okay, now, what would you recommend? And what is before you this evening is what was recommended, Urban Core and DT. So let's see, the next, oh, and that's if, if Mr. Stringfellow is able to get through, this would be an excellent time for him. If not, I'll just keep going.
Madam Clerk, was, were you able to... Okay, Mr. Stringfellow, if you'd like to introduce yourself, we should be able to see you and hear you.
I hope so. Can you hear me clearly?
We can.
Great, great. I'm Jim Stringfellow, and I represent the family trust that are seeking the changes that we're hearing tonight. And I ask for five minutes of your time, Commissioners and Mayor, because I thought it might help for you to hear from me directly where we're coming from and how we got here. But I need to first set the record straight, because I heard so many comments about this skyscraper in the, in the first vote, the text change amendment vote, that I realized that some untruth rumor has been repeated so many times, it now sounds like it's truth. Here are the facts. We have made no proposal for a skyscraper. We have no proposed project at all. We have no proposed development. We have no developer. And frankly, I'd be surprised, I'd be surprised if a developer saw it as wise to build a skyscraper there, even though it will eventually have the downtown zone. This hysteria that I'm sensing, I think stems from the fact that downtown zoning allows for 12-foot, 12-story buildings. All downtown zoning does. And so, you know, starting with Depot, across the street from the park, Depot Ave., and going all the way north to University Avenue, there are countless pieces of DT downtown zone property. Any of them can build a skyscraper. No one is. You know, we don't have any tall buildings going up in Gainesville. I think the last tall building was Beatty Towers in the 60s. So it's just trying to set the record straight that we have made no proposal for a skyscraper. And if someone did, I think we would be, we would be against it, too. But what we have done is we have tried to make a long-term strategic plan for the family members that are the beneficiaries of this property. There are a number of them. I am just the trustee and the decision maker, I'm not the majority owner. And we saw that down the road, the highest and best use for this four-and-a-half, five-acre parcel is not going to be warehouses or more warehouses or any of the other kinds of uses that are allowed in the I-2 zone. So I hope I set the record clear on that. We haven't even entertained a developer, and we haven't offered the property to sale. It's, we are under a long-term lease there. The tenant has got years to go on the lease, so there's no tower on our jib, okay? Let me move on to my prepared notes, and I promise this will only take five more minutes. Jim Stringfellow is my name, and the property is owned by trust with multiple beneficiaries. I live just down the road from this property. I live in Kirkwood. I've been there since 1984. I've lived in Kirkwood 38 years. I love the Kirkwood neighborhood. I plan on leaving there feet-first only. And I, I do, I also love our new park. My vision for the areas surrounding the park is in line with, I think, most of our In the long run, that property, that area should be, and it can be, a living, working, shopping, dining area. Bring more people downtown, and we believe this is downtown. Cade is downtown, the park is downtown, our property is downtown, and that's why we're seeking downtown zoning, one of the reasons. But anyway, in the long run, we know that having industrial use on that expensive park is not, is not the best use down the road. In fact, the zoning that we have now, industrial-to zoning, the list of allowed uses by right is a long and broad list, but it allows no residential. And it is largely a list of uses that we would probably all agree are not appropriate to but the park. So we're thinking down the road, and we're thinking, this building is old, the oldest part of it's 1969, the next oldest part of it is 1974, and the front of it is 1984. As a trustee, I have the fiduciary responsibility and obligation, if you will, to do the best thing for the owners. And the best thing in the long run, for the park and for the owners, is to change the legal uses allowed on this property to be different from the industrial current zone, and to have uses that will include residential use, and uses that will be compatible to its, with its proximity to the park. That zoning is DT downtown. Folks have approached me and asked, Jim, you know, have you considered applying for one of the U's, like U9 or one of the other U, mixed-U zonings in that group? The answer is yes. We did our homework, and we did our homework prior to filing any petitions. The short answer is that U9 does not provide the density, the density that we would need that's required to make that a viable redevelopment mixed-use site. It's valuable as it is now. It's an I-2 industrial site with a very broad list of approved uses, and it's valuable now. And to seek a zoning change that doesn't change the value of it is not a prudent thing for me to do as a trustee for the property owners, and it doesn't really get us anywhere. So we, we're not interested in, in the lower densities that only make it worth the same as it's worth, more or less, that it's worth now. It's all about density. If it were to be redeveloped, a developer would need to know how many units he can get on the property. I don't think anyone cares about the height. I don't care about the height. It just, the height, this height subject just happens to come with DT zoning. We care about the density, and you can get density without height. The difference between U9 and DT zoning density is a very large one. It's a significant difference, and it's a difference that would make the difference between it being a viable, financially viable redevelopment site. Economically feasible, I guess, is the word that they use. The tenant we have there is a wonderful tenant. They've been there for 26 years. They are, Graybar is a, a national tenant. National tenants require long-term leases. Graybar is under a long-term lease with several years left to go on it. When that time comes around for renewal, they will expect a long-term lease again. So I, I guess, I just want to summarize by saying that we are working on a long-term plan, and we think that this, we believe this is an opportunity for the city to know that down the road, this property could become a mixed-use live, work, play, fun, dine, you know, all those uses that really belong near the park. That's what it could be, and it would benefit all of that. The infrastructure is down there, people want to live downtown. There is a, there's a serious lack of affordable housing at any time, for rich people and poor people downtown. And so this would bring that, too, and more customers for the downtown businesses. So it's an opportunity we're providing the city, and that's how we see it, and we hope you do, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lawrence, if you could move to the next slide, and there's just a couple more that are just showing the condition of the area around the property. These are right out in front of the property. Next slide. And of course, the Gainesville Hawthorne Trail connector. I'm always a little disappointed when I hear it mentioned, especially here in Gainesville, as the Hawthorne Trail. I expect that while in Hawthorne, but we all know it is the Gainesville Hawthorne Trail. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, go off course for just one second to point out something that I doubt many people know, which is the Gainesville Hawthorne Trail was slated to be a gravel trail that would not be any fun to ride on a bike, until a member of the House of Representatives here locally, now Commissioner Chestnut, learned that funding was needed to pave that trail. And she got on that trail to get the funding, and with amazing speed, the funding came through, and that trail became the paved trail that we all know and love today. Next slide. I won't ask whether Commissioner Chestnut has ridden it.
I thought it had been paved for more than four or five years. That must have slipped my...
This was, this was a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm trying to avoid that.
Yes.
Trying to help you out there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, next slide. Now, here, you can, it's just an opportunity to see a side of the property that you may not normally see unless you go around on the trail on the backside of the park. These are just pictures taken from the backside of the park and show you what kind of interface there is with the park itself. Next slide. So the current land use, again, is industrial, next slide, and the proposal is to go to Urban Core, similar to what you see on the north edge of the park, next slide. And the current zoning is I-2, next slide, and it would go to DT if approved. So next slide. So just briefly, the current industrial land use is clearly targeting a different type of use than is appropriate for the site today, manufacturing, distribution, wholesaling, warehousing, et cetera. And Urban Core is calling for residential, office, business uses, ensure, building up on compact pedestrian character of the area. It allows the density that Mr. Stringfellow was referring to, which is up to 150 units per acre, and an additional 25 per acre by way of a special use permit. And it then makes clear that it will be subject to the urban form standards of the Land Development Code, and may also achieve additional height by way of height bonuses. If we go to the next slide, this is taken from the Land Development Code, and it shows you, I've highlighted in yellow the Urban Core land use, and what are the zoning districts that can be used to implement it? It's DT. There's other special districts, PD, Con, and PS, but the only generic is DT. So the next slide. And the current zoning permits no residential use, and instead, among a wide array of uses that are certainly incompatible with the park, quite a list of sexually oriented uses as allowed by right. It also allows five-story heights. And then what's proposed, again, is the 150 residential units per acre by right, and then additional residential units can be achieved by way of special use permit, and 12 stories by right, 14 with bonuses. And of course, all of it is subjected to the very extensive urban design requirements of the transect. Next slide. So we've been through two neighborhood workshops during the, the second one was during the course of the pandemic and done remotely. First one was live. And the major concerns that were raised are building heights, shadows cast on Depot Park as a result of those building heights, parking issues, traffic, and the threat of extensive high-density development extending south to 16th Avenue. And then ultimately, the question kept coming at us, why aren't you doing a PUD and PED? Next slide. So as, as indicated, the building heights are allowed, 12 stories by right, 14 stories by special use permit, as is the case in all of DT, which covers virtually all of downtown Gainesville, and not a single 12-story building even has been built. So, next slide. So anyway, in response to the concerns about, well, the building's too tall, it seems incompatible with the park, won't that be terrible for the park, and will it cast shadows? So we had CHW, who you all are familiar with, prepare photographs and insert buildings in the background that are theoretical, of course, that are possible under the use by right, which allows some perspective on, well, what kind of visual impact does it have? right, which allows some perspective on, well, what kind of visual impact does it have? But then also did shadow analysis. And we do have the landscape architect who prepared this available if you have questions about the, you know, the manner in which this analysis was done. But first, let me show you, walk you through it, and then if you have questions, that person can answer. What you see there is the building form footprint that is a theoretical footprint, but which complies with the DT requirements for urban, good urban design. So, you see how it's lining the two streets that it's abutting, has all of the parking interior and hidden, and then one additional building along the backside that relates to the park. And the form that it takes, I think in the next slide, if you can go to the next slide? Yeah. The form it takes is what can be achieved, making reasonable assumptions about sizes of residential units, maxing out at what is possible by right. And it's, you saw, there were multiple buildings shown in the footprint and then these are maxing out at 12 stories. And this perspective is looking at it from just to the east of the Cade Museum, looking south from the Cade Museum. And of course, the existing vegetation along the wetland area at the far end of the park certainly obscures the view of those buildings. Next slide. Actually, if you can go back one slide, two slides now, thank you. Each of those dots on the park are where the different perspectives were taken. So now, if you'll go forward. Yes, to the next one. So here, we're looking at it from the southwest, from the train depot. Next. And these, this is with 12 stories. Now, here it is, looking across a much more open area and so it's more visible. Next slide. And then looking from the west along that trail that I showed you some images from a minute ago. Next. Again, great vegetation obscuring the view. Next. And then looking southwest from the trail as you get much closer to the Stringfeller site. Next. And then shade analysis. That's seemed to be a very significant concern expressed to us. So this is analysis showing what amount of shade is thrown at 4:00 PM on October 15th. And as you can see, it's barely reaching any part of the park. And next slide. And then here it is on December 21st, which I believe is the day that will cast the longest possible shadow at 4:00 PM. Now, if you wait till 5:00 PM, that shadow's going to be a little longer perhaps, if there's any shadow, because by 5:00 PM on that day, it's getting pretty dark everywhere. Now, you've been provided shade analysis in your email by others. Next slide. And I just wanted to throw it in there so that you can see on this person's analysis on January 1 at 4:00 PM, really not that far different than what our analysis produced in December. Hard to tell what several of the other illustrations are intending to show. If you have any questions about how this was done, you know, to validate that it is to scale, done as accurately as we can, the person from CHW is available.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, so if we go to the next slide. Another concern was parking and, you know, as we all know, in the downtown, there's no parking required. However, no one builds without parking. You can't get anything financed. You have to accommodate parking. And when it's done with the DT designation, it has to adhere to standards that are much more difficult to comply with than other zoning categories, typical zoning, so that the building, that the parking has to be hidden in the back and parking structures, if used, are aligned to improve the urban form. Traffic concerns. Well, the amount of new residents that might be accommodated there if built out to the maximum allowed by right, there will be, it's a significant amount of housing, quite a bit of housing. And the destinations for most potentially living there could be all within a short bike ride, a little electric scooter ride, mostly within a walk, potentially causing you to get sweaty in July, I would admit. But it's, it provides incredible proximity to the University of Florida by way of the trail and the overpass over 13th Street. So, it really represents a location where the multimodal transit-oriented development is clearly, clearly what would be the case. And then why not a PUD or a PED? Well, the owner is, as you've heard, is not a developer, has no development plan in mind. And also, and because of that, it doesn't make any sense to propose a PUD-PED with specific requirements for moving forward with development in a very short period of time, which is normally the case. And the city prefers, or at least has been preferring, not to rely on PUDs and PDS to accomplish all that is being accomplished through the transect. The transect is doing what we always historically had relied upon, the PUD-PED mechanism, to make possible to try to get better quality urbanism. And then there's the suggestion that this might stimulate a rush of high-intensity development south all the way to 16th. And what you see there, outlined in red, is all the property controlled by the city today and it's in use along Main Street. And at the south end is the Sweetwater Branch Sewage Treatment Plant. And I don't think you have to be a real estate broker to realize that that's not like a, being near an attractive water body that would help to stimulate and attract a lot of high-density housing. It's just not at all likely. And there's very little room available for much development of any real significant intensity. This is just the last slide, which I think helps you to, to help remind all of us that, yes, the public realm has been dramatically improved. It's very desirable to be there and walk out there. Traffic is calmed and people have responded and they are. But when you start thinking about living there and, you know, living in a unit six stories high, look out over the landscape, well, most of the landscape is pretty darn ugly. It's just ugly old industrial stuff that makes it a hard sell to even contemplate something of six, seven, eight stories of decent residential housing as well as non-residential uses below. So, it's, you know, there's no certainty that with approval of the requested land use and zoning, that it will happen. It's a tough sell. What is proposed is what the city recommended on its own, without any suggestion coming from the applicant, and is, as it turns out and as you heard, it's the only generic mechanism available today that makes it conceivable that there is a financially feasible project out there that could redevelop that site and provide that infusion of housing and an appropriate use, helping to wrap the park. One other thing I'll just mention was, when this was started, the city was on the verge of proposing the same thing for the RTS site. And we, I frankly have lost sight of what the status is on that, but the RTS, old RTS site is of course, a redevelopment opportunity that the city has been exploring. And the thinking then, and I have no reason to believe it's changed, is that it would be also an appropriate designation of urban core land use and DT zoning for that as well. And that's actually all I have, Mr. Mayor, and encourage you to approve both of these petitions so that we can begin to find out what kinds of development could actually occur on that property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coffey. I, there are several questions or comments and so I'd encourage you and Mr. Calderon to be available if any of those arise. We'll start with Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Thank you, Mr. Calderon. Thanks everyone who is staying here to be a part of the process. I will tell you that what I'm going to offer will not make anyone happy, as is sometimes the case. But it's what I think is the right thing to do. I like a great deal of what everyone has had to say and I get where everybody's coming from on lots of this. It is true that City of Gainesville owns a big chunk to the, to the, to the right of this, to the east of this, which is going to be a buffer for, it's, it's going to be a buffer to what happens on the, on the east side of the property in question. This is the perfect slide to work with though, because it gives me some, it points out a few things. Actually, it's not perfect, but it's close enough. As we learned many slides ago, north of Depot Park is downtown zoning, urban core, land use, which is a maximum again of 14 stories with meeting extra, extra things that the city would like. It's 12 stories by right, you get a couple extra stories if you do some extra things. What we want, what I've managed to learn about urban planning is that you want your biggest, tallest buildings downtown and you want to kind of ease down as you go from there. As you go away from downtown, you want to step down the number of stories that are available so that people ease out of the city. There are some cities that I've been reading about that took maximum zoning very seriously and put essentially downtown zoning all the way to the city limits and it gets pretty weird when you do that. Cities like Portland are very tall to the city limits and then Calpastors. That's not what you're trying to achieve, I don't think, anywhere. You want, you want it to step down. With that in mind, I think the perfect place to start stepping down is Depot Avenue. Not stepping down to what's currently there, industrial zoning, which is not, I don't think anybody's version of aesthetically pleasing. Between the cement plant to the west and the, the old RTS facility as it currently exists, there's a parking lot basically, and the current use of the Stringfeller property for Graybar, that's not what you want. That's not great to have next to a park. It's not great to have across the street from where people live. I don't think anybody's happy about living across the street from the cement plant that's been there forever and ever and ever, which is another thing I want to address later. But I don't think that the place to step down is somewhere south of the property in question either. The folks in Kirkwood have a reasonable expectation to not have downtown zoning come right up to the doorstep. I agree with that. Fortunately, we have lots of zoning categories in between downtown and, and single-family zonings. I am very comfortable with something as high as U seven, which is four stories by right, six stories with some additional bonuses. It allows on 4.2 acres, you could put 290 residents. It's a, it's a maximum of 88 feet tall, which is about the height of a mature low-bollie pine tree, just for reference. So it's not crazy tall. It's actually about the height of the continuum on University Avenue. Certainly livable for the most part, but you can put a reasonable number of people there, especially if some more development happens on Main Street. Pretty soon, you're talking about a pretty dense area with lots of people using lots of services and providing lots of services. I say all that to say, the, I would, would be very happy to vote for a U seven zoning on this, but it sounds like that's not something the applicant is interested in. I would love for them to become interested in that, but, but that's, that's what I can offer tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Ward, you must have read mine. What I have written down here is to ask for a less intense four to six-story transect. So I hope that that is something that the petitioner would be interested in. I, I, I just can't see the 14 stories. First of all, I just can't see putting 14 stories, I can't see putting 12 stories down here, right in, as I said, encroaching on Sugar, Sugar Hill, Kirkwood, and Copley Hills. So I think the four to six down, down, down step there would be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes-Santas.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking. We're a growing, growing city. We either grow denser or we go out and do urban sprawl. People are coming and we have to look long-term at how we're going to address the housing issues. Last year, over 6,000 people moved to Elachua County. Carrying that over the next 10 years, that's 60,000 people moving here. To meet that demand, that's 24,000 housing units that have to be built in the next 10 years to meet that demand. We're also seeing significant amounts of people moving from the coast to here, climate refugees. Recent study came out a couple weeks ago that the Atlantic is expected to see a foot rise in the next 30 years in sea level and the west coast is, Gulf Mexico, in portions of that, we see a foot and a half. The area between Orlando and here, people are going to move here. They're going to be moving from the coast as they get pushed out by, by climate change. It's an unfortunate reality that we, that we have to live in, we have to look at and see what the, the long-term ways of dealing with that. First, Depot Park is an urban park. It's, it's right next to our downtown. It's, it's there. It's, and urban parks do have bigger buildings around them. If you go to different cities, urban parks have, have larger buildings around them. You already have tall buildings around Depot Park. The north is already zoned to 14 stories. You could do that. The power plant is around 11 stories tall, so there already is tall buildings within a hundred feet of the, of Depot Park. Mostly, I think this is the place for housing. This is a lot next to the rail trail that goes to tens of thousands of jobs at UF, UF Health, and the VA. It's a quick bike ride or a walk there. It's next to a park. It is within a few hundred feet of our main bus hub that connects the whole entire city. This is probably one of the most places you could live that you really don't have to have a car. It's also within walking distance of, I mean, it's in, all on South Main Street that we just redid that made it a very walkable street. It's hard to even imagine now what that street used to be like, but it was a five-lane superhighway and now it's turned into a walkable street. It's also, also within a few hundred feet of a grocery store. If this housing isn't a good place fit Um, I, if this housing isn't a good place fit for this area, I don't know where, where it is. This is currently industrial. I think that's the absolute worst thing. This is our heaviest industrial zoning that we have in our city is right here. This is what it is. I can't think of a worse place for it to be next to our prime jewel, uh, Depot Park. This also is a, is a paved area and a building. I don't believe there are even a single tree on this lot. If you look for areas to redevelop, this, this is the place to do it. It won't hurt, it'll, it'll make the environment better. There'll be more trees, there'll be less, um, impervious space, um, so it would help the watershed. Also, one of the things that, while there is, the areas that are zoned downtown, there aren't that many vacant lots, um, that are zoned downtown that are not owned by the government. UF has some, um, the city has some, and there's a few private owners that are out there that have empty downtown lots, and I'm, I'm worried that we're going to start seeing, uh, more demolition of residential and commercial if we don't allow other areas to be zoned DT. I'd rather have an industrial building taken down than a water retail space or, or housing. Also, one of the things I think we should consider is, uh, hopefully that the commission will pass an inclusionary zoning ordinance that will mandate and force the developer to provide subsidized housing. Um, I think that's an important thing to, there'll be a percentage of that housing that will have to be mandated to be subsidized. I hope the commission passes that in the next couple of months. The other thing, I think, touching to Commissioner Chestnut and, uh, and, um, Commissioner Ward's on the, on the U seven zoning, or I guess the urban mixed use, we're talking about landies now, uh, I count votes if, if that's where it goes. The one thing, though, that, uh, so there's DT in the north, and a step down coming down. There's also U eight and, and U nine to the south of there. Southwest Sixteenth Avenue and Main Street is zoned U eight. So this, going down to U seven is not a, a step down. It will go down and back up again. So I, I think if we're looking for something, I think a U eight or a U nine would make more sense, because then it actually would be a, a stepping down as you go, uh, south along Main Street. A U seven would just be kind of a, a U shape. So I, I'll, I would support the DT or the urban core land use, uh, but I would also, if, if there's four votes for it, I would support, uh, a U eight or U nine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And before I get to you, Commissioner Sacco, um, I'm just going to suggest to the commission, I'm going to go out for public comment here, uh, it looks like before a motion. I think that's appropriate to hear, um, folks before we, um, put a motion on the floor. But if the motion is anything other than what is on this agenda and recommended, I recommend that motion be to deny the petition and allow the applicant to go back to staff and start over. So, um, we've, I think, been fairly criticized, um, for not following that pattern, um, and I, you know, hopefully we can learn from that a little bit. Um, excuse me, Commissioner Sacco?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, Mr. Coffey, Mr. Stringfellow. Um, your, your presentation was, was a lot of good information to have. Um, one thing I did hear, though, is, you know, you have no plans on looking for a developer. You have no plans for several years for the property, but you need density. And my question to that is, um, it's a, it's a hypothetical. It's a rhetorical question. No answer really required, but if you have one, that's great. I understand you need density to make the land more valuable if you choose to do something else with it, but if you have no plans for it as of yet, I am personally uncomfortable with giving it a DT zoning, uh, anything that could attach to DT. Because I see that as writing a blank check. By right, you can just go do all of this when we haven't been told what benefit the community would get or what the purpose of that structure would be. And I know we can say housing in a vague term, and I understand your concept of more housing, just by demand makes it cheaper, just having more. But it is still a very vague, far-off notion for me to today write that check, and that makes me uncomfortable. So if, if you want to explain why you need more density now when you have no plan of what to do with it for several years, I'd appreciate to hear that.
Go ahead, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The economics of this site is such that it's, it takes a, a lot of density in order to make the numbers work. A major part of that is the fact that it's property held in trust, and the beneficiaries are relying on the income it produces today. It's a very successful property as it is today, and those beneficiaries, in some cases, rely on that income for survival. And so the trustee can only contemplate marketing the property if it's going to yield an offer that adequately protects the beneficiaries. And they've done their homework, as he indicated, and have looked at the available generic zoning, and U seven, U nine are two examples of generic zoning, which exists all over the area, as well as the DT, which exists all over that area, um, and have concluded that the economics will not work at any of the lower densities authorized. The, um, U nine and U seven are significantly lower than DT. And so the, the, you know, if you deny the request, as the mayor suggests, and I don't think you could act on, or should act on, an alternate plan that hasn't been noticed, um, there will be no further submittals, uh, because there's, there's no point, because the trustees cannot market the property at those lower intensities. Now, I've learned something in the course of preparing for this and looking at this application that I was not aware of, and that there, there are ways in which the commission could deviate in terms of density, you know? For example, say, approve U seven but allow a density that's higher than otherwise required, or approve DT and allow only buildings of ten stories, for example. There, there is a way to do it, and I've, I've provided information to the city attorney's office, see if they would agree that there is a legal means of doing that, and the owners have entertained that as a possibility, uh, because as he said on the phone or on Zoom, he doesn't want to see fourteen-story building there. Frankly, nobody believes there ever would be. I mean, why aren't we seeing twelve, thirteen, fourteen-story buildings anywhere in Gainesville? We're not. And, um, so anyway, that's a possibility. But if, if you just want to impose or adopt U seven, U nine, these generic categories, there would be no further application submitted.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Would you like to comment on those possibilities?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, Sean McDermott, Assistant City Attorney. Sorry, I stepped out at the worst time. I needed some blood sugar. But, uh, yes, so I think some questions that were raised, from my understanding when I was out, was, uh, well, a couple of things. First is what happens if the city commission were to deny the application that's before you tonight? And there is a section in our code that speaks to that. And the long story short there is that there is a, if the city commission were to deny a land use or a zoning request, um, that that, there shouldn't, there should not be an application for another land use or zoning on that same property for a period of twelve months from the date of the denial. However, it goes on to state that the city commission may waive that time limitation by an affirmative vote of five commissioners, provided that thirty calendar, calendar days have elapsed since that action of the commission. And so that's, um, you know, how, how, like, how that would work. I think if, if the other, you know, feel free to stop me at any time.
That's good. The question was more Mr. Coffey suggested.
Right. And so there are a variety of potential ways to, you know, condition development approvals and what may or may not occur on a property. I think what Attorney Coffey has mentioned in particular is the use of deed covenants, like, because I know, um, he's several months ago sent, just, you know, just wanted to float that question out there. And I would agree that those are potential ways that, you know, the city can negotiate and, um, impose conditions upon development approval to, you know, to achieve certain purposes. I haven't been presented anything specific to consider in that, you know, in that front. And so, um, you know, that's as much as I think I can speak comfortably.
But is allowed?
Right.
Is, is an allowed process or option?
Conditional zoning in general in the state of Florida is allowed. There, there, I won't bore you with, there, there are strict limits. I say strict, but not necessarily bright line, clear limits, unfortunately.
So it can't be like R two, and then we're like, you know, you can actually have a hundred and eighty density? Like, that, that kind of, you can't just swing for the, for the trees.
Well, right, or it can't be too far removed from what's going on with the property itself. So, I mean, the perfect example is you can't condition up an approval on, you know, put a condition to the effect that the developer has to, you know, build something on the other side of town, you know, something that's completely not, has anything to do with that property. There are limits, but in general, municipalities can condition discretionary development approvals. Importantly, this is a discretionary level, unlike site plans that, you know, have recently been before the commission. So that is a, you know, an allowance with discretionary development approvals.
Thank you for making my choice a lot easier. Thank you, Mr. Coffey, for looking that up. Legal research is hard.
Yes. Well, could I just clarify, though?
Yes, sir.
The question is whether, uh, conditions can be established at the rezoning stage when you're using a generic zoning category. So the example would be if it's DT and it would otherwise allow twelve-story buildings, but the zoning gets approved, but for this property, no greater than ten stories. I mean, I always had assumed anything like that would run afoul of contract zoning prohibitions, but it can be done. And so I guess all I'm suggesting is if you're going to, um, deny the petition, then, um, if you are able to articulate what you would approve, what is it about DT that is unacceptable? There may be, uh, a mechanism to allow the DT, the UC DT, and accomplish your objective, uh, but I'm not promising that that, that, that can happen, because it would, it would require your city attorney to tell you that, yes, this approach, this mechanism that's being used in quite a few places in Florida and have been upheld by the courts can occur. So I would just suggest that if, if otherwise, at the end of this evening, you've concluded not to approve, and that's it, I'm just making it clear first that the applicant will not be resubmitting one of the other lower densities, uh, one of the lower transect categories because they already know it will not work.
Um, that's how you put your light there.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, if I may, just one further comment. The type of conditional rez, uh, rezoning approval, I think that Mr. Coffey is speaking to, is essentially what the City of Gainesville calls a planned development zoning. The planned development zoning district is, um, one of those allowances under Florida law that does allow for a tailored, conditional discretionary development approval, with the thought being that the development conditions can be specifically tailored to that property to extract the greatest public benefit, um, at the same time that a, you know, viable development would be, you know, could be, theoretically be enabled to occur. Um, so that is the mechanism that's historically been used in the City of Gainesville and, um, and is, you know, like, it is something that has to be negotiated and have to work through that process, but in general, that is allowable under Florida law. So that's, that's an option, certainly.
Thank you both. Um, so I'm going to be honest, um, as I was earlier, I, I, I don't like the blank check DT zoning. I can't, not without a plan in front of me of what it will look like, what benefit it will deserve, other than helping a trust, which is noble and good on its own, but in this chair, I can't make that what, what motivates me to allow that change. Um, I could be convinced to look at it again as DT, but with those conditions, to make it less tall. I have no problem with density. I love density. I have a problem with the height. Even if you swear, like, we're not going to do it. That's a, that's a trust thing. I have a hard time trusting people. I'd rather have it written out, and I don't, we don't assume that we have an understanding it's written out, and that's what we're going to follow. Um, so, and I don't want to come back with anything lower with, with a, a lower zoning, but if you want to come back with DT and some conditional idea, uh, I'd be willing to look at it. I really don't want to see anything above ten stories. That's, that is my hard, my hard no. But I have no problem with the max, with the bonus density this brings. I just, I, I cannot allow any building higher than that, um, in, in, in good faith. But thank you for that free legal research you did and forwarded. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, for that option to be explored, really, realistically, the only way, I think, is to, is if you were to continue these applications, so, because I, I would not expect the applicant to start all over. So the only way that it, it could be considered, uh, I think realistically, is for it to be continued and give it a date certain, two months from now, and allow time for the, uh, city attorney's office to be able to advise you on whether this mechanism that's being used in other parts of Florida, they're comfortable with it, uh, and if so, uh, come back with an example, by way of example, the same thing that you have before you tonight, but conditioned so as to prevent any building greater than ten stories.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that that would be completely out of line to do, sort of at the dais tonight. That, that, first of all, I cannot recall doing that. So it'd be highly unusual. Doesn't mean it's not legal, but, um, it would be through an abundance, abundance of caution that I, I think this body would approach anything close to that. Uh, I would, I would default to what Mr. McDermott said, which is if, if our goal is to place a series of conditions on the property to achieve a broader community goal, the PUD and PD would be the standard mechanism to do that. And, and we've all seen that in, in some recent items. So anyway, we've got a lot of lights, and we've got a lot of neighbors here that still want to speak, so let's keep moving forward. Commissioner Ariel, did you conclude? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to move that we deny the ordinance.
Okay, motion in a second, that we deny the, um, uh, ordinance, item two zero zero eight seven eight. Commissioner, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make one comment after making the motion, um, because it is very late. We're not going to get into conditional development from the dais, as the mayor said, but I would like to suggest, uh, to, uh, the keeper of the trust, as you heard from our attorney, there's a period of thirty days. You clearly have a commission that understands the argument. There was a clear intention by the commission to provide all those upgrades and to the safety to South Main, because we understand that that area is not always going to remain industrial. It was the downtown zoning that was just too far in terms of the ask from the, from the trust. So I would, I would ask that, that answer that was given of no more submittals, that you think about that, and this commission is, is, is open to listening, but tonight I cannot approve this. So I thank you. I don't know who the secondor was. I thank you to the secondor.
Duncan Walker.
I had two or three, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Hayes-Santas?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one option could be to not deny it, but to send it back to the plan board to address the height issues and have, have them work on it, um, and then... address the height issues, um, and have, have them work on it, um, and then working with attorney and, uh, and the applicant, um, and see if they can come to, to, uh, to something that will kind of address what the, what we have, uh, or what the commission has, um, brought up. So that's, that's one other option, um, 'cause I think, I think denial means that it, it will just stay industrial, and it will probably stay industrial for very much longer times, I'll probably renew that lease. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, the, the hangup for me is the height, um, that, that's, that's the issue for me, not the, the number of people. You can figure out how to do it closer to the height I was talking about, uh, the, about the height of the mature pine tree, then we, we can work on it.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would rather have, have this petition stay with the commission, rather than sending it back to the plan board, so that would be in support of, uh, Commissioner Ariola's motion, um, because I think we are, uh, we are at a point where we are understanding it, uh, and can make the decision, but I think it would just prolong it. The height concerns me greatly, and, uh, I'll see if the petitioner wants to, uh, make any amends there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it up. Go ahead.
Sorry. Clarifying question. If we deny it, they can't amend it, can they? What's that, that time period again? Is it thirty days to amend, or after thirty days, they can come back?
If, if the commission were to deny it, it's, you know, the first step is there's not supposed to be another application for at least twelve months, but the city commission on, at its, at your own initiative, may waive that time limit a- after thirty days from taking action.
Okay, so, he comes back with something better, we can say, cool, we, we, we'll, we'll allow it, but otherwise, if it's not what we want, we can just reject it outright again?
Well, correct.
Not even consider it. A brand-new petition.
I would, I would specify there would need to be, at that point, a brand-new petition, because this one will die with a negative vote, and then, um, thirty days, you may waive that twelve-month time limit, but that's just to allow the process to start anew.
With, with the associated costs.
Correct.
Thank you. So, on that point, I, I don't hate the idea of sending it back to the plan board. There's another opportunity for the community to come talk. There's another, it, it, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Chestnut, about dragging it out, but I think, given the conversation we've had, a seven, and with the audience, their comments, um, a second shot to see what could be worked, instead of saying, start from scratch, spend all that money, and you probably won't, because it's a lot of money. Or give that opportunity at the plan board, see what can be fixed, if there's no way to do it, fine, it'll die at the plan board, and it won't come back to us. But I'd rather give it that, that second shot, given our comments, 'cause we also can't talk about this outside of here, um, let them have a shot at the plan board. The plan boards hurt us, it was a close call last time, knowing what we think now, they could just flat-out reject it, 'cause it's not what we wanted. But I don't think there is serious harm in giving that chance.
Okay, so the, there's a motion on the floor to deny. Madam Clerk, if you'll call our first speaker, please? Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um, just one moment to reflect on inequity. The applicant gets all this time to go through all these different details, and we get three minutes to try and respond, and there's a lot of stuff, um, very unequal. Jobs, your planner told you this will create jobs. Yeah, the construction will create jobs, it's like the pipeline, the pipeline in North Dakota will create jobs, but it's not really a job creator. So, your planner should lose that from the rhetoric when he talks to you about what's gonna happen with this project. Affordable housing, if you can't speak in detail about what the affordable housing is going to be, and how affordable it's going to be, then you should throw out that phrase, because it's just misleading, false, and I think someone earlier said shameless. The applicant, Jim Stringfellow, um, he said, "They need the dollars to work," and he explained that by saying, "They need to have it changed so that they can make more than they're making now." Okay? That's not up to us as the taxpayer, and that's not up to you as commissioners to respond to. I'd like to have a lot more money, too. It doesn't mean that I come to you and say, "I need some more money, can you work that out for me, more, more money than I've got at the moment?" That's, that's a, it's a bad argument, and it's a false argument. None of this that's been going on tonight is required to do on your part. You can turn this down, and it'd be good if you did, because it's not gonna create jobs, it's not gonna be affordable housing, there are gonna be impacts, and those impacts will be negative, and they will lead to other impacts, and they will lead to other impacts. Spot zoning is spot zoning, and there's no reason, you know, see how quickly it went from Commissioner Ward's suggestion of four to six stories, to the applicant responding, "Well, I can come down to ten." You know, my dad was on the plan board years ago, he told me, "The developers come in, they got one idea, the minute they don't get it, they switch it around a little bit, and they're always working to get what they need, and they always start high, and they bring it down a little bit." I saw the same thing when I spent three years on this commission, and it's the same thing that's going on tonight. You turn this down, they'll come back, and they'll come back with something that they can live with, and then maybe you can live with, too. Not this. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next will be Jackie Davis.
I think she left.
Okay, then we'll move to Sharon Bower. Yes, Sharon Bower? Yes, come on up.
And Ms. Davis may be listening on the phone, so we'll get to the callers after we get to the folks here.
I need the overhead, please.
It takes him a second. Here you go.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Bower, a former planner for three Pinellas municipalities. Uh, I seem to recall that Depot Park was intended for the benefit of and designed by the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods, so I searched the Sun archives this morning, and I found this Speaking Out column from twenty-two years ago by Kim Tanzer, a member of the team designing the park. It describes all of the various aspects, I've enlarged a couple of sections. The design team included neighborhood residents. In addition to the remediation project, the plan included using a site next to the park as a recreation center with a pool, multipurpose center, soccer field, track, and basketball courts, because, she said, most of the neighborhoods surrounding Depot Park, Porters, Spring Hill, Sugar Hill, Coltclaw Hill, and Kirkwood desperately needed activities for their children. While the rec center didn't happen, the team did such a good job of designing the park that it attracts people from outside the city limits. It's often crowded, with people parking in the neighborhoods. That his city, the city's website said it's, says it's the most used, the highest, I'm sorry, it's late, the highest-used and most visible public space in the city of Gainesville, and serves as one of the main economic drivers in downtown. That's made the nearby site of a building supply store more desirable, and the owners want it, want to increase its value by upsizing it from industrial. But this is not the time and place for that. That industrial area needs to be planned, as a whole, with the neighbors. This is the very definition of spot zoning, for the benefit of the owners of a single parcel. In the last few years, you've eliminated the limit on the number of amplified noise events that disturb neighborhood residents, started renting the park for private events, depriving them of the use for it, and now you're considering it, surrounding it with tall buildings, uh, that will provide, uh, result in more crowding and exacerbate the parking problems. Commissioners have responded to the increasing numbers of neighborhood residents who come to object to actions like this by insulting us, calling us confused, misinformed nimbies. I started attending meetings in nineteen seventy as a student in public affairs reporting, and I have never seen anything like the contempt that some of you show for your constituents.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please? Welcome back.
Hello. I doubt that anyone on this commission or in this room would marry somebody sight unseen. I doubt that anyone in this room or on this commission would buy a used car without kicking the tires and going for a test drive. Yet, we've been painted a glowing picture by a pitchman of affordable housing, increased jobs, and reduced carbon footprint. First of all, the type of building that, uh, he was describing, that type of zoning has not produced affordable housing in any city that has tried it, from Portland to Seattle to my hometown, Los Angeles. It has produced housing that is increasingly unaffordable, both where it is built and in the adjacent neighborhoods. Jobs, there's no way that this, that something like this could create jobs, except temporary jobs putting construction projects together. We need to ask questions like, what kind of jobs, for how long, is it at an affordable wage, and for whom? About the carbon footprint, any increased living, building, or activity is going to increase the carbon footprint, that's just what it is, and it would continue as long as those structures stay there. And then we find out, here's the good part, that it's all illusory, because, uh, the petitioner does not have a developer, does not have a plan in place, does not have anything concrete to tell us. Ms. Saco referred to, Commissioner Saco referred to writing a blank check. Please don't do this. Please pump the brakes, back off, and come together with the rest of the community to find out, uh, better utilization of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Welcome back.
Thank you all very much. A couple of things to, uh, reiterate or, or reflect on the idea that if Mr. Stringfellow and his, uh, trust members can't make money off the property, it really is not our job to guarantee that he can do that. We have the rules, we have the zoning, why do we have to change the zoning to make his business successful? If it's not successful now, I'll gladly take over, I bet I could do better on that spot. I feel a little bit like Uk- the Ukraine right now, and, uh, somebody's coming up and telling us, "This is what we need, we can't work without it." Well, no, you'll figure it out yourself if you can't do it. And, and to say that there are lots of places in downtown where no one is using, no one's putting fourteen stories as an argument for this not being a fourteen-story site is ridiculous, it's a red herring. If there's allowed, and someone wants to do it in the allowed zone, they can do it. This lo- zone does not allow that. The, I would lo- and I would love to see, uh, Mr. Coffey, who's a friend for a long time, uh, really, really smart man, uh, very effective, I would love to see him applying this kind of, uh, argument and determination and research and work to finding some affordable housing and making that work. To say that these poor people in this, in this, uh, trust can't make it on this, this, this little piece of property, when there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people living right nearby who are having trouble making it, and we have promised them to help them, and we're not doing it. I would propose that we deliver on those things before we try to help a fairly wealthy family do better on their property by changing our zoning. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Oh, hey, Commissioners, good evening, um, appreciate the time. I'd like to just briefly remind everybody, uh, some of the permitted uses that are allowed by right with the current industrial zoning. Mr. Coffey alluded to some of them in the presentation, but sexually-oriented cabarets, sexually-oriented motion picture theaters, sexually-oriented retail stores, used car sales, waste management facilities, junkyard, salvage yard, that's just to name a few, that's by right, that's the existing zoning right now, and it's next to the nicest park in Gainesville. So as far as the location goes, I, I believe the property is downtown. If you ask a regular citizen, where, where's the park, where's the museum, they'll tell you downtown. And as a matter of fact, if you go to the websites of Depot Park, Depot Park is conveniently located in downtown Gainesville, amidst great food spots, local breweries, museums, galleries, and shops. Same thing with the, uh, Cade Museum, they are located downtown Gainesville, they stated on their website. I think DT is an appropriate fit. The applicant's property borders both Depot Park and the Cade Museum. And, uh, as far as businesses go downtown, uh, downtown has the highest turnover rate for commercial real estate in all of Gainesville. These businesses need more patrons, uh, to stay in business. I, I manage a property in downtown Gainesville, um, I managed it for about seven, eight years, and we've had five tenants. That's not sustainable, that's not good for businesses, um, and these are all local businesses, they're not chains. In addition to that, um, the housing aspect of it, we need housing, Gainesville needs housing, uh, whether it's affordable or, uh, market rate, um, you guys could potentially have the opportunity to control some of that. If you passed your inclusionary housing ordinance, um, this property would be forced to, uh, have a affordable component. And what better place to have some affordable component? You're next to public transportation, you're next to employment centers, you're next to, um, the bike trail. I mean, it's, it would be an ideal place for workforce, housing, affordable housing, and market rate, and you could do all, all of those with DT zoning. A lot of fear-mongering, I mean, the fourteen-story building, everybody's talking about fourteen-story building, where are they? They don't exist, they're not downtown Gainesville, there's multiple vacant lots, nobody's proposed a fourteen-story building, it's not economically feasible, it's super expensive to go vertical. This property is big enough and wide enough
Thank you.
That they would not, um, they would not require fourteen stories.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
I appreciate your time, I appreciate it.
Nancy Darren?
Miss Darren, you still here? I don't see you, I don't see. Oh, there you are. Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear through? I, I ask you to deny this petition, and I thank Commissioner Saco for bringing up the blank check analogy. I, I have been listening, going, "I can't believe this. There's a long-term lease, there's no plan, we're being asked to make a major change to benefit a trust." So, this is not downtown. Depot Avenue creates a natural boundary, it's next to one of the crown jewels of our city. Low-rise fits far better into this area and keeps a much more open and inclusive cohesiveness, like the plan developed back in two thousand thirteen, which I remember and was excited about so much, to, um, look at building reuse, low-rise buildings, pedestrian-friendly gardens, living green infra- infrastructure, and so on. Density and mixed use can be achieved without simply building ever-bigger boxes. And even the applicant described our community commons, it was our public money that improved this area. It's a community commons, and we have a lot of public, um, land around it, and this is an opportunity to keep it our commons, our public improved and, um, commons. We know that going above four to six stories and building a box is energy-efficient, demands far more intensive fossil-fuel-driven infrastructure, reduces neighbor- intensive fossil fuel-driven infrastructure, reduces neighborliness, helps social cohesion, contributes to heat island air pollution and stormwater. We never should have passed a DT that went over eight stories. The costs and problems that result will be more evident as climate destabilization, energy depletion, and financial upheavals kick in even more in coming years. When we put up the sta-- oh, dear, I'm already there. Taller buildings have a large effect on livability and street light, tall building canyons, and there's evidence that high buildings actually damage people's minds and feelings, the social and mental well-being of families, and effects on human relationships. High-rise living takes people away from the ground, away from casual, everyday society that occurs on the sidewalks and the streets, and decisions to engage in public life become formal and awkward. We have very creative ways proven everywhere that you can have density, you can have low-rise, you can have creativity, you can engage the community. We need to do that. We must not go in this old direction that is going to be so detrimental to everything we love about this place. Thank you.
Kali Blom?
Kali, if you're out there, couldn't go to the next speaker. If he comes in, we'll get him after that person.
I think this is Eric Lewis?
Welcome.
Hello, Commissioner. My name's Eric Lewis. I've lived in Gainesville since 1967, and I was a planner for the University of Florida for about 16 years. My comments are, I want to be clear that I'm a supporter of in-bill development and higher densities in the urban core. I am also a supporter of redevelopment of South Main. However, I have some concerns with this proposed land use zoning change. My primary concern is that this property be considered for up to 14 stories. In my mind, UC downtown zoning should be reserved for our city center. I define this as the area between 13th Street and Main Street, and maybe, maybe Northwest Fourth and Southwest Fourth. And that would be the only areas that I would consider for anything like that. Additionally, land uses should in general step down from the city center. It seems that South Main would be better served with U6 mixed-use zoning that steps down. At the first public meeting, every citizen in the room supported this land converting to a mixed-use development. So this was the neighborhood meeting where we came out. This is over two years ago. So when you talk about extending the process more, we've been following this for two years, okay? At the first public meeting, so not one supported changing it to a downtown land use zoning. No changes were made after that first public meeting at Holiday Inn. There was another public meeting that we were not informed of. I want to point out that when UF did its strategic development plan a few years ago, they brought in some really good consultants from Boston. They were shocked at the densities and heights that we were looking at in Innovation Square for the UF. Now, you'll notice that Santa Fe and UF have not built anything over three or four stories. But that area is the area that we were going to have big stories. In their mind, a walkable community is a community that is limited to four or five stories of mixed use. And so they were mystified by it for walkability, and their recommendation was that we actually go back and rezone those properties. You can talk to Linda Dixon if you think I'm wrong. My direct concern with this change, beyond it not being downtown, is that there is no road network beyond Tunley Main Street. If you look to the south, there's one road that goes by where Best Motor Works are and stuff like that, but otherwise, it's north-south. The only other north-south is Sixth Street. So, I'm going to have to wrap this up because it's jello. I just think that this whole area needs to be mapped out and planned. You need to do a grid network that's going to go across, connect Sixth Street, Main Street. What does it look like when all this industrial zoning goes?
Thank you.
And I think it's premature at this point.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Nathan Scott?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Nathan Scott. So, I support to dial the motion for the reasons set forth by the prior speakers. I'm here tonight to stand in support with my neighbors. I share their concerns as a citizen of Gainesville. I'm equally concerned with the inconsistent comments and actions from the commission. I mean, you had a prior vote where Commissioner Ward and others voted for sweeping draconian changes to the Land Development Code against overwhelming public opposition. And now, we're playing politics by denying a token and doing the other things. Also support the comments that were made by Mr. Gordon in terms of inequitable allocation of time. I and others have never been afforded the time that Mr. Coffey was given tonight in anything that we've sought to bring forth before the commission. So I think the takeaway from this is, you know, with all due respect, please stop pandering to special interests and start listening to your constituents. I mean, you're elected to serve us. Again, I mentioned the prior vote and the inconsistencies there. You have sweeping and draconian changes to the Land Development Code against overwhelming public opposition, and now we're, you know, we're playing politics, changing your tune on this particular issue. Seems to me that if you're consistent and you truly felt the way you said, then the same four votes would be there to approve this. But again, the bottom line, at the end of the day, elections have consequences, and we need to put political ideology aside and unite as a community in further instance, bringing good governance back to City Hall, because we clearly don't have it. I mean, Commissioner Chestnut and Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker, that's not reflected to you, because both of y'all have consistently shown you listen to the people. I heard Mr. Coffey talk about indirectly benefits of affordable housing. What does that even mean? You know, I also heard we have an opportunity to control affordable housing. Really? Well, you had $32 million of ARP money that you squandered that could have been used to address the affordable housing crisis, but you choose to squander it. Blank check, that's another inconsistent statement that really concerns me as someone that attends commission meetings. On Thursday, at the General Policy Committee meeting, you're going to have proposing a charter amendment to add staff, individual staff for commissioners. So I hope, you know, in that case, you're asking voters to approve a blank check without telling them even how much that latest self-serving proposal is going to cost us, but you don't seem to have a problem with blank checks when it meets your interest. But it's just inconsistent. I wish this commission was really consistent and really had good governance and listened to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Chances?
Yeah. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Just here to kind of echo a few of the same things that have already been said. I mean, I think Commissioner Ariola was the one who said that, you know, nobody intends for this to stay as an industrially zoned area, but something that was brought up by Commissioner Duncan Walker is, there's no plan. We don't have a plan. How do you expect us to trust in no plan? We can't see the vision. There's no light at the end of the tunnel. There's no silver lining. Like, we gotta have a plan. This is our city. We live here. We care about this place. We want to see it thrive, but we have to have something to believe in, and that has not been provided here today. There's, you know, overwhelming concern from everybody here. You know, it was very disappointing to hear you guys pass the last agenda item. I agree with Commissioner Sacco. We can't be writing blank checks to benefit people individually in our city when there's thousands of people that live here and who are going to be affected by this decision. So, I think that you guys should support this motion to deny this agenda, whatever. You guys know what I'm saying. Support this motion to deny. And also, I have to just say, I think that they're being very disingenuous when they're saying there's no plans for development, there's no this, there's no that. I mean, come on, right? Like, we're not stupid, right? Like, there's no rush to change the zoning if there was no plans in place. There's obviously plans in place. We weren't born yesterday. So, let them go back to the drawing board. Bring something back up to the commission, you know, put in a new application that they can be happy with, that you all can be happy with. But where we're at here today, there's no reason to move forward with this. And so again, please support the motion to deny.
John Barrow?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. John Barrow, resident of Kirkwood, and my house is actually on South Main Street. Not too many people can say that. Regarding the petitions to rezone Stringfellow property, I strongly disagree with staff's recommendation and hope that you will deny these petitions for the following reasons. One, the consensus from the first neighborhood workshop was clearly supportive of the ongoing redevelopment of the area, but felt strongly that this parcel, given its location, should not have the same zoning as the downtown core, and that such a rezoning would be a bad precedent for the South Main corridor all the way to 16th Avenue, which Mr. Calderon almost admitted in his presentation. They're looking at setting the stage for what's going to happen next along that corridor. Two, based on much of the discussion at the workshop and that I've heard since, I would say the rezoning as proposed is not consistent with the community vision for the corridor, and is certainly not in keeping with my vision for the corridor. Three, it is problematic, to say the least, that the rezoning would be from the lowest density, shortest, to the highest density, tallest, allowed on a parcel this far from University and Main and adjacent to Depot Park. People have been talking about 14 stories, but they haven't said that up to 200 feet would be allowed. And for comparison, the lighthouse in St. Augustine is 165 feet tall. Four, the proposed radical change in land use and zoning would be textbook spot zoning, with everything around it still I-2 industrial zoning. Please also consider the following points in your deliberations. One, in the previous petition, PB 2113 TCH, the staff's report states, "In designating transect zones, the code assigned transects that are tailored to the unique character of the specific geographic area of the city. This section of South Main currently has and should maintain a different character from that of the downtown core." Two, the paramount concept of transect zoning is that development steps down in height, scale, density, and intensity as it gets farther away from the city or town center. Three, the parcel should be rezoned to facilitate redevelopment, but the new zoning should provide for a transition from the urban core to the residential neighborhoods down Main Street and around the corner. Four, an appropriate transect zoning and one that would be more consistent with the comprehensive plan, I believe, would be U6 or U7. Five, underdeveloped parcels in the downtown core, which are already more difficult to develop, would likely be skipped over completely if the property is zone DT and the property around it follows. This is leapfrog development, just on a smaller geographic scale.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Appreciate it.
Ed Thompson?
Welcome.
City Commissioners, thank you very much for your time and your patience and your hard work in meeting the challenges facing Gainesville today. I want you to know that in 1967, I came here as a UF student, and in 1998, bought a house in Kirkwood where I still reside. So I've seen a lot of changes and things going on, and I love Gainesville. The, one of the exciting things that I saw happen a few years back was the construction and development of Depot Park. I was excited, but I was skeptical of a park like that on this side of town. But my fears were laid to rest when I noticed that people of all walks of life came and enjoyed that park. My wife talked to a lady who brought her kids from Newberry to play at the park. I'm a great Depot Park person. I want you to, I want to also say that I am not against development, and I realize you have challenges to meet, and I know that Mr. Coffey has presented a very detailed and understandable plan for some residential areas and other developments. I do not believe that that particular plan is good for the site that he proposed. I want you to take a moment to think outside of the box. I want you to look at the other side of the coin. I want you to go somewhere where we have not been yet. And to be a little honest with you, I think maybe I'm just crazy. I want you to think about the possibility of purchasing that the city of Gainesville purchase the Stringfellow property and expand the Depot Park. Just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
July Thomas?
Yeah, all right. So I got a couple of things. I was trying to be pretty quick. Real quick, Commissioner Sacco, you mentioned 3% population excess over housing. I think you might have flipped it around. There's a 3% excess of housing over population. That was from an internal report published last year. It conflicts with, that's actually just a rental shortage, and it conflicts with the actual numbers from the ACS census from 2018, which said there's a 24% shortage. The ACS survey in 2019 said a 16%. I'm forgetting the decimal. And then the decennial census put us at 9.2 or 9.7, anyway, right around the state of Florida for shortage. So, there's some discrepancy in those numbers, and I would encourage us, we're looking at like, really ramming through housing and upzoning and stuff like that, that maybe we, like, make sure we're taking a holistic view at these numbers and making sure that they're not being influenced by, say, people who stand to benefit from more development, right? Oh, the other thing is the inclusionary zoning thing. I know that y'all have been talking about it, and I've been hearing from people inside the government that y'all are working on this inclusionary zoning ordinance. And the thing that I haven't heard mentioned, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but in 2019, the state government passed a law saying that if you implement inclusionary zoning, then the city has to reimburse the developer for the cost differential on the inclusionary zoning. So hopefully, that will be taken into account. I'm looking forward to reading that whenever that does come out. Now, as far as this development goes, you know, this is an excellent example of, we talked a little bit about step-down zoning, but we're also talking about, I went back and rewatched all the parking stuff, like all the parking meetings from last year, after all the parking debacle a few weeks ago, and y'all kept talking about running the city like a business. Well, this is an example of where in business it's called a negotiation, right? And they come up and they make an opening offer, and you're allowing them to lead the negotiations here rather than thinking about big picture, what this should look like. As we have Porter's Quarters in the northeast, northwest, like I always do the never-eat soggy waffles thing, and then we have Kirkwood down to the south, what we have here is a great opportunity for that missing middle housing that is quite often thrown around in the new urbanist circles, and you could have a missing middle development that's still going to be walkable, but then you don't have to settle necessarily for like the five-on-ones with the vacant commercial on the ground floor, and it's just a wind tunnel, and there's no one actually really walking around, right? Which is all up and down Southwest Second Avenue. So, anyway, I just encourage you all to take a look at some other possibilities and think about being the leaders on this rather than waiting for developers to come to you and piecemeal together whatever they want to see in the city. Let's think about what kind of city we all want to live in, right? All right. Have a good night.
Thanks.
William Offorn?
Hello again. The petitioner's responsibility is to maximize return on the parcel, the investment, the parcel. It doesn't have to be the objective of yours or of the cities. I think that's been well-stated. That said, I like the idea of compromise that has been brought up in terms of remanding this back to the council or back to the staff. And Mr. Coffey did state that the, and I think Mr. Stringfellow said, they weren't as interested in the PUD or the PD. What that does, the PD allows the petitioner to approach with an actual plan. So there's no back blank check. There is an actual plan, could include affordable housing, like people have said, mixed use, sure, but the negotiation starts, and there's something shown on paper that everybody can get behind, and it can be a more public process. So that's, I think, maybe a good way to go. The petitioner also showed a lot of really nice photographs of people playing on the park, walking down of people playing on the park, walking down the street, and the kind of the streetscape. Well, the street probably was developed, the widths and the, and the amenities, with the idea of the existing zoning existing into the future. And that's, that's industrial. So, when you, when you start to change the zoning, that increase, generally increases the numbers, the density. And the difference, from my architectural background, is that the difference between zoning in an industrial, which is 1 in 500, 500 square feet per person, to mixed use or residential, which is 1 in 15 to 130, is a huge increase in the density. I think we all know that. It changes fundamentally, potentially, the character of that street. So, looking at the pretty pictures of kids with balloons and roller skates and all that may change if you change the density of these parcels. And so, something to acknowledge and consider in the future as you contemplate zoning changes and density. So, it can all be accommodated. Change is going to happen, but I would ask that the engineering and so forth within the city, consider those potential changes, as they do affect the character of the beautiful work that's been done and executed, and people seem to love in this part of town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Davis? Have you ever heard Jackie Davis on the podium? That may be a repeat.
Yeah, Jackie, I think, left.
Okay, that may be a repeat. Melanie?
Barr.
Barr? Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for rejecting this. I really appreciate it. I know I speak for many people. But what I want to say is that no one is here supporting keeping it industrial. We don't want that. I can't imagine, I'd be horrified to see sex shops, or even other industrial uses, parking lots, whatever, parking, car sales. We don't want that. Residential is great. We like residential, but not 14 stories. You say, oh, that may not happen. Look at the standard. How tall is the standard? Eight, 10 stories? That looks awful. Who likes driving down 13th Street and seeing that? Who wants to be in Depot Park and see a 14-story building looming above them? One thing I did like about the industrial zoning, it said no more than five stories. So, five stories, I agree, that would be fine. Also, you need to do a new plan, because that is the epitome of spot zoning. When I saw that highlighted in red, nothing, it's a big jump from downtown to here. It's wrong. And they can call themselves downtown, but people that do live downtown, we can't walk over a mile. It's a mile. The address is 1015. It's, maybe in the future, it'll be downtown, but it's not downtown now. Just because you say you're downtown, doesn't mean you are. So, what we want to do is look into lower-density housing. We want families and lower income, and people to socialize and mingle, and not to be an obstruction to the park. When Mr. Coffey showed us those beautiful pictures of how Depot, South Main looks now, it's a red herring. It's a magic trick, because that looks nice now, but if it has 14-story buildings looming over it, it won't look that pretty. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's the last speaker I have.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Burke. Adam, we'll go over to you for anybody on the phones.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are ready here with at least four people. The first is Tana Silva. Tana, you've got three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Please do deny this petition and the zoning after it. This is not about population growth, affordable housing, urban sprawl, density, height, or the environment based on no analysis. Nancy Darren described exactly the values the brilliant 2013 Power District redevelopment plan sets forth for this area and these properties specifically. And in 2014, public input to envisioning South Main's future. The petition is about raising the property value, and that's all. The property owner's fiduciary responsibility is his business. Your responsibility is representing the best interests of the city now and in the future. It doesn't matter that they don't plan any development now. That's one reason to not hurry, and instead, look at South Main and the Power District holistically in open public discussion of beneficial incremental sustainable equitable green growth. It's a real shame that the owner and Mr. Coffey, whose son is buying properties across Main Street, get years with the planning staff and all the time they want, while the public gets three minutes tonight. Not the open discussion people have been asking for about South Main. For now, industrial property is profitable, and light manufacturing is important for good jobs. Ridgeway makes trusses for houses across the street, for one example. Polluting industries do need to go, but not all light manufacturing, and certainly not piecemeal to benefit one owner. The city and the local economy can't thrive on large apartments and chain retail. South Main Depot Power District needs to be publicly and holistically considered as distinct from anywhere else in town. It has its own history and character that newer homegrown small businesses have chosen because of its uniqueness and lower cost, taking advantage of creative building reuse to keep it special. The Stringfellow's are doing well with their property and in no hurry to redevelopment. Money is the objective, and city staff encourage the push to change the land use and zoning. All this has come about with no public participation. The land use and zoning need to go back to implementing the 2013 Power District redevelopment plan extended in new public discussion about the future of the whole area for greatest use of its potential. These properties are in that plan, and it centers on incremental development of the area's unique characteristics and potential to benefit local residents and businesses. Otherwise, this is all leading to an extractive economy that concentrates ownership and hastens environmental destruction. So, please deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Our next speaker, Kim Tanzer. Kim, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to speak that, in support of the motion to deny this petition, I was in fact the lead designer on the 2000 Depot Master Plan, which included 800 acres around the Depot, the then-proposed Depot Park, including Porter's Quarters, Spring Hill, Sugar Hill, the Southeast Historic District, and the neighborhood we called the 1913 District. Our promise, and this was done in, in coordination with the city of Gainesville, our promise was that the park would support those neighborhoods, not drive their long-term residents out of the area. I want to remind you that your job is to represent the city of Gainesville. I understand that Mr. Coffey's job is to make money for his client, and his client's job is to make money for the trust. That's not your job. And our proposal then is the one I think you should support. We proposed removing the industrial zoning and replacing it with mixed use, which would allow housing in the neighborhood of three to five stories. The zoning categories were different then. Three to five stories is also consistent with traditional inner cities such as Paris, London, Rome, Barcelona, or Washington DC. And I think that it is also supported by the founders of new urbanism, Liz Plato Zibberk and Andres D'Wani, who believe that with climate change, it's inappropriate to build buildings taller than you can walk up and down to, because we may not have enough energy for elevators in the future. I hope that you will deny this petition, go back to the drawing board, as others have said, that you will support a master plan of this entire area, and then move forward on behalf of the residents of Gainesville, Florida, rather than random developers who ask you for special advantages. I want to remind you that citizens and people who are on this call tonight, including me, have lives. We don't want to go to meetings three or four nights a week. We're not paid to do it, and we haven't volunteered to do it. And so, I hope that you will deny the petition tonight and move forward. And I would like to close by saying, I knew Mr. Stringfellow, Jim Stringfellow, and I am so very sorry that his name is associated with this project, because it is not befitting of his legacy. Thank you.
Thanks. You, the next speaker is Donald Fields. Mr. Fields, you have three minutes.
Mr. Fields, can you shut your, your volume down on your TV?
No, I can't just yet.
Yeah, can you shut, can you lower the volume on your TV?
No, I can't. But I, I'll move away from it.
Okay, that'll work.
Can you hear?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Am I speaking now?
Yes, you are.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Donald Fields. Again, I would like you to understand that in 2018, Jim Stringfellow was quoted in the Gainesville son as having sold his last 28, 27 acres of land from his trust on East Side, that was out by East Side High School. Well, it's unclear to me that he's, how he has another five acres that he's planning on developing, which does make him a developer. And then the second thing I want to express very much the need for a plan. Everybody's been talking for a plan that's very clear and explicit as to how, how the city's going to be developed over the next few years. Commissioner Walker Duncan has said she hasn't seen the plan. Part of the, Commissioner Ward has said he's been working on a plan of how to transition from a downtown type of high, new high buildings, that's now stretched from downtown to 13th to the west, not so much to the east. And that, and that we need, the people need to see what the explicit plan is, where the downtown zoning is with the higher buildings, where they expand, where else you plan on putting hi, higher buildings, which are up four to now 14 stories tall. And, and the last one that was out by, that I was following was out by 43rd and 16th, 23rd Northwest. And I, we just need to see that plan, as to what's, what's going and which direction, and what kind of transition is going to be made. What are the different areas going to be like? Where, where are the residential areas, the single residence areas, and so forth and so on, if at all? Otherwise, it sounds, it, it sounds like you're planning on making the city of Gainesville, as it now exists, all a, a high building area, starting with a few, few places scattered, and then connecting them together over time. Give us the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Our next speaker, Robert Mounts. Mr. Mounts, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Robert Mounts, Gainesville native, frequent visitor to the Cade for civic club meetings, and a former chair of the College Heights University Park Redevelopment Advisory Board, where our funding, tax increment funding was used to redevelop South Main Streets, and to the state that it is now, to accommodate all kinds of multiple model traffic and slow traffic down. So, I have a definite interest. I know that, that when that project went through, there was a lot of opposition from some of the owners of the industrial property to, to that development, but we knew then, and many others did, including Craig Carter, who was on the commission then, that the highest and best use of that property was going to be eventually something other than industrial. But the land development code describes downtown zoning this way. It consists of the highest density and height development with the greatest variety of uses, and civic buildings of regional importance. Streets have steady street, tree planting, and buildings are set close to wide sidewalks. The building occupies the boundaries of its lot, while internally defining one or more private patios. This is the most urban of types, as it is able to shield the private ground from all sides, while strongly defining the public street. Well, a very prominent Gainesville developer you all know, who has built things downtown where it is downtown zoning, told me several years ago, there's two reasons why you don't go above six stories. Number one, you have to have much higher and more expensive elevators, usually two elevators for a building of that size. Number two, you have to have fire and rescue capability to address a, an emergency in that top floor. And who pays for that? That would be the city. So, right away, that's a good reason why, despite all the downtown zoning we have, nobody's building it. They built the standard 10 stories, because you can rent those apartments by the room, and it's profitable. But if this developer, Mr. Coffey, says we can't make it work without 12 to 14 stories, well, those aren't going to be student apartments, and it's going to be something else. And it's not going to work, period. And in addition to that, your first vote ignored a number of criteria that should be used in rezoning property. Compatibility of permitted uses, the character of the district, the relation of surrounding properties and other similar properties, and a specific one that the proposed transect zone shall provide a logical extension of an empty zone, or an adequate transition between zones. Where is that?
Mr. Fields, thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Our last speaker, at least for the moment, Armando Guerindi Gomez. Armando, you've got three minutes.
Happy birthday, Adam. Listen, I want to tell you, one of the most profound things said tonight was, one of the most profound things said tonight was said by Gary Gordon. And I think it was really profound and interesting. What he said was, worrying about, Mr. Coffey talking about who is going to pay for affordable housing, worrying about how we are going to make sure the owners and trustees are going to bank off this land, who is going to be banking off of it. And the other thing that's interesting, that if you look historically, I hear some of your neo-urbanist, new urbanist planners, some of them, neo-urbanism has not always necessarily been favorable to communities of color. Specifically, it's not been favorable to African Americans or Black Americans in this country, specifically historically. So, I find it interesting from some of the, quote-unquote, some of the new urbanist planners that are coming before you. I also appreciate Commissioner Santos talking about inclusionary zoning. That is important for something to look at. It's been something that's been kicked down the road, much like your community land trust has been kicked down the road for quite some time. So, you all are talking about coming together. The other thing that I appreciate, a lot of you that are having the conversation up there, about making sure we have density, density downtown. That is important to have density downtown. It is important to have density downtown where it needs to be, and where it's supposed to develop around the core. But it is also important to listen to the neighbors, so, to Commissioner Testman, and to you others that are up there listening, Commissioner Rillo. Thank you for what you're doing. Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker, thank you for listening to the neighbors on tonight. And to the Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Sacco that said about the blank check. That was a very good, excellent analogy that was made. Excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Armando. Mr. Mayor, that was our last caller. The floor is yours. Okay, thank you. Madam Burke, was there anybody else? Okay. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for your comments. There's one thing I did here, and I think I've heard all night. Y'all have been involved as much as you can for over two years now. There's been a lot of work put in by a lot of people for over two years. I also heard something, and I wrote it down. Neighborhoods wanted redevelopment, and I heard Ms. Barr say, no one wants it to stay industrial. So, this is, I do this often, my last, last-ditch effort to the motion maker, we can still deny it, but kick it back to the plan board. That way, all this work isn't wasted, all this, two years of comments aren't wasted. We can give it one last shot, and if it's not what it wants, it was already close last time. It could fail there, too, and never come back to us. But I think in respect of everyone who has worked on it, there wouldn't necessarily be harm in just giving it some time and asking the plan board to review it. It could give time for more community conversation. It could give Mr. Stringfellow time. It could give Mr. Stringfellow time to talk to the trust and talk to members of the trust, figure out what can be worked with numbers. It's an opportunity, not a promise, and I think that's a compromise that we can, we can all live with, just to give it another chance at conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So I reserved comments earlier, you know, and out of respect for everybody's time and exhaustion, I share it with you. One of, one of the most frustrating things for me about the conversations that we've been having like this is that I believe in our core, most if not all of us, agree on the same goals. I think all of us want development that is more equitable. I think we all want to stem displacement. I think we all want to address our responsibility towards climate change in a reasonable and responsible manner. I think we all want to be a welcoming city. We're not just the people that live here now, but the future residents are welcomed in and have opportunities as to where they live and who they live next to and what they're able to enjoy. I don't think we have any disagreement about those goals. And I, I don't remember exactly who said this and I, and I'm not, it's not my intention to call anybody out, but I have not heard any name-calling from any member of this body towards anybody in our community. I have not heard any. I have only heard folks speak their truth with a lot of passion. And we're not going to be able to move forward in a manner that's going to allow us to tackle our most difficult issue, housing, unless we're able to speak a common language. Because I'm terrified that the barriers that we continue to erect in building new housing is going to further accelerate displacement, is going to continue to see rents and home prices go up, it's going to continue to disallow first-time home buyers from ever entering the market. All of these things are basic, basic economics. I also don't believe that we're beyond the pale. I feel like as a community, we still have an opportunity to make decisions that will ensure that all of our neighbors are able to access quality housing wherever they choose throughout our city and live how they want. In order to do that, we are going to have to start speaking in a language that's open and accepting and welcoming. And so we'll have other opportunities, you know, and that, that's, that's clear. Folks talked a lot about wanting to see a plan. We do have a plan and we're updating that plan right now and it will be the plan for the next 10 years. It's massive. The only city in the state and maybe in the country centering equity in every element of that plan. Nobody else is doing this work. So we're going to have to open ourselves to a Gainesville that is going to be different. I grew up here too, right, y'all? I moved here when I was 11. I used to ride my bike down the middle of University Avenue with my brother in the height of the day, noon, 1 o'clock, because there was no cars out there in the middle of the day in the summer in Gainesville. Everybody went home. It was a sleepy town. I loved that Gainesville. I also love the Gainesville we have today. And so we need to just accept that in order to accommodate all of these new neighbors, I love new neighbors. I love when people move into my neighborhood. I love when my neighbors and other neighborhoods introduce me to their new neighbors, that, that there's some place for them to go and that when they go there, they're open, they're welcome with open arms and that they immediately feel like they're a part of our community. So that's the effort that I will continue to put forth in the 10 months that I have remaining. With that, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye. I'm sorry, let me just be very clear here because we don't normally get a motion to deny. So if you vote in the affirmative, you are voting to deny the petition. If you vote nay, then you are essentially voting that you want to accept the petition. So with that, so everybody's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion, the motion is to deny. And so, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call a roll call vote.
Mr. Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
No.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
No, that motion passes 5-1 with Poe and Hey Santos in dissent, making the next item irrelevant.
Passes 5-2.
5-2, I'm sorry, 5-2, yes. And so I think the appropriate motion would be to strike the item from the agenda. Commissioner Ward?
Motion.
Motion a second, then we strike the item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, Commissioner Ward, under member comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I'm not going to ask for, for a vote on this tonight, but I do want, I want to let everybody know that I'm going to be asking to put on the agenda very soon, a, an agenda very soon, an item to discuss how we might clear some of this up from a, a planning and zoning standpoint. Yes, we're working on the, the 10-year co-plan, but it's not going to deal specifically with what we need to deal with to, to avoid issues like we had tonight and things popping up here and there in a place we know they're going to pop up and, and try to, to change. I would like to see a very public, very intentional, very well-planned process to consider what we want the, the area between Southwest 6th Street and Depot Park, from Depot Avenue to South 16th Avenue, to be going forward. It's mostly industrial right now. That's a horrible use for that. Nobody thinks that 20 years from now, that ought to be industrial. It's a common theme tonight. It's been a common theme for a long time. I've been meaning to bring this up, but I was waiting until we finished this item, which has taken us a very long time to, to be able to get to. And now that we have disposed of that, which is part of it, I want us to have a very intentional, very public process to figure out what it is we want as a community, and I mean as a community, specifically to include the, the people who, who are right next door to it, but people outside there too, people who are affected in, in many other ways. There's a way to do this and, and really get it right. Nobody thinks there should be, continue to be a cement plant across the street from Porter's. That's a horrible thing to have to live next to, but it's been there for a long time. One day it won't be. In the process of thinking through, through what we want, that big piece of land to, to be zoned to, by the way, when, when we change the zoning, it doesn't mean people have to stop doing what they're doing. It means that the next iteration of a particular parcel has to be different. So it doesn't mean that they have to stop making roof trusses there. It means that when the roof trust people sell that property, whoever comes in after that does something that is not industrial and is more, or may, maybe it is industrial. Heck, I don't know. We ought to have the discussion then. In that process, we need to be intentional about creating industrial space elsewhere in the City of Gainesville that is more appropriate from a transportation and infrastructure and livability viewpoint, because we don't want to lose those jobs for our community that already exist in those industrial spaces. We need to figure out where, where the appropriate places are for that as well. Again, I'll be asking to put that on an agenda in the not-too-distant future, not to make the decision quickly, but to start the process and figure out what the process looks like. Just warning everybody, that's, that's coming in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you all spending the evening with us, really do. I know that you had other things that you probably would rather be doing, but you stuck it out. I appreciate that very much. With that, we are adjourned.